I will call to order the Wednesday, August 5th, 2020 meeting, public meeting of the City of Falls Church Planning Commission. And I will start off by reading this notice. The meeting for which this agenda has been posted will be held pursuant to and in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Action 2.2-3708.2, and state and local legislation adopted to allow for continued government operation during the COVID-19 declared emergency. All participating members of the Planning Commission will be present at this meeting through electronic means. And all members of the public are welcome to view the meeting at www.fallschurchva.gov/pc and on FCC TV, which is Channel 11 on Cox, Channel 2 on RCN, and Channel 35 on Verizon. Public comments will be accepted electronically until the end of the public hearing. Please submit comments via email to plan@fallschurchva.gov. Again, you can submit public comment via email until the end of the public hearing by sending it to plan@fallschurchva.gov. Also, a quick reminder to my fellow commissioners, please make sure you have muted yourself unless you plan to talk. This will help us avoid technical problems with echo and make it easier for everyone to hear whoever is speaking. And with that out of the way, Ms. Basemore, could you please call the roll? I'm here.
Hasner?
I'm here.
Ms. Teets?
Here.
Mr.?
Here.
Mr. Puntz?
Here, here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here, here.
Ms. Weiss?
Here, here.
All right. For getting that good. Not, not. Thank you. All right, before we get started, I do want to take a quick moment to acknowledge the passing of City Councilman Dan Zee, who died on July 27. Dan was a dedicated citizen of Falls Church and served for many years on the City Council as well as the Economic Development Authority. Dan made many contributions to our community, but his efforts related to the environment and environmental sustainability stick out to me as particularly notable. I think many of us on the Planning Commission feel strongly about the importance of taking care of the environment when we consider developments in the city. And we all know that Dan was a strong ally on council with regard to those issues. He'll definitely be sorely missed, and I think I can speak for everyone when I say we have Dan's family in our thoughts. With that, I do need a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
This is Ms. Teets. About the agenda, sorry. Um, we have, it lists a work session, but there's nothing under that. So are we having a work session or are we not having one?
There's no work session tonight.
Okay. So I would move to adopt the agenda with the removal of the work session item?
I'll second that, Mrs. Teens.
All right, the motion from Ms. Teets, the second from Mr. Stevens. Ms. Basemore, could you do a quick little vote on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Teets?
Yes.
Mr. Puntz?
Yes.
Mr. Puntz?
Yes, yes.
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 All right. With that, we have an agenda. Number four on our agenda is receipt of petitions for items not on the agenda, presumably from the public. Ms. Basemore, do we have any such petitions? None, okay. And I do not think we have a speaker series tonight. Which brings us to number six, our first action item, which is the South Gate 2 rezoning item. I assume someone is going to talk about that.
Hello, this is Akeeta with Planning. That would be me. Good evening. So the Planning Commission has two land use actions before them tonight for the development of South Gate 2 Shopping Center proposed at the 130 East Fairfax Street. Those include, first, a recommendation to City Council on ordinance amend official zoning district map. Rezoning approximately 1.7 acres of land at 116 and 130 East Fairfax Street. Second item is final approval of the site plan application for the proposed development of 130 East Fairfax Street. So before I get to the staff recommendation, I would like to provide a quick background on the application. It's been a while since the Planning Commission saw the site plan, and it has evolved into a conditional rezoning application since then. The subject site is comprised of two parcels of land on the south side of East Fairfax Street between Douglas Avenue and South Washington Street, which is directly across from the Protestant Episcopal Church. These two properties are commercially zoned properties owned by the church. Fairfax One LLC is currently leasing both properties from the church and has a development proposal submitted to the city to construct a commercial building for a children's play gym on 130 East Fairfax. That site plan was filed in November of 2019 for approval by the Planning Commission, but was placed on hold while staff evaluated their current zoning and proffers affecting the property. So a little bit of history on the properties, back in 2003, this property and the adjacent property at 116 East Fairfax were both rezoned from OD, official design, to B3 under proffered conditions to facilitate the development of a multipurpose educational campus for the church. That project was never constructed, and the approved site plan expired back in 2004. Pursuant to our zoning code, as well as the Code of Virginia, once proffered and accepted as part of an amendment to the official zoning district map, proffers continue in effect until a subsequent rezoning changes the zoning of the property covered by those conditions. So the current zoning designation for these properties is proffered B3, which essentially restricts the development of the properties to 2003 approved development plan. So the main purpose of this current rezoning application is simply to remove the existing proffered development plan currently governing the property and to allow the new development plan proposed by Fairfax One LLC. The current B3 zoning designation, however, would remain unchanged for both properties. In terms of the rezoning process, it is ultimately a legislative action by council following a recommendation by the Planning Commission. The applicant has applied for a rezoning under the conditional zoning form of zoning district map amendment and included proffers in their application. Proffers are voluntary conditions offered by an applicant that limit or qualify how the property in question will be used or developed. As I just discussed, upon approval, the proffers become part of the zoning and run with the land. Then there's the site plan application before the commission, and the Planning Commission is the final authority for approval of that. So tonight, we're asking the commission to take concurrent actions on both the rezoning application and the site plan application. The site plan approval would be contingent on the rezoning approval by City Council on August 10, and the proposed motion reflects that. The City Council granted first reading on July 13 and referred the rezoning application to the Planning Commission and the Urban Forest Street Commission for comments. The council also scheduled second reading and final action on the item for August 10. The applicant is here and they do have a presentation, so for a quick summary of the proposed project, I'll keep it really brief and let them provide a presentation in more detail. So in terms of application before the commission, as we just, as I mentioned, it's a site plan and a conditional rezoning, which just means the development will be subject to proffers. The site, development site, the rezoning application includes both 116 East Fairfax and 130 East Fairfax, but the proposed development is on 130 East Fairfax only, which is the surface parking lot. The adjacent property is currently a shopping center, which is South Gate 1, with multiple commercial tenants on that property. The project entails approximately 12,000 square feet of commercial development on the existing surface parking lot. And I'll let the applicant speak more on the use proposed there. The Alexandria location for Scramble, which is the name of the play gym, has a retail section within the facility and similar models proposed here. Proposed height is one and a half story with mezzanine, also 33.6 feet, including the parapet wall. In terms of site plan status, the commission held a work session on February 3 and provided their feedback on the initial site plan. The commission's guidance at that meeting aligned with most of the recommendations received from staff and included improvements to design and architecture, parking layout, landscaping in general, site layout oriented towards a more urban-style shopping experience. The applicant did receive those comments in response. They did not find the recommended building placement closer to the street feasible, and the architecture of the building did improve slightly and is consistent with the existing South Gate 1 shopping center on 116 East Fairfax. Other staff comments provided in attachments, six mostly included minor items intended to help to refine the application. Most of those comments have been addressed in the revised site plan. One important item to note is the Public Works recommendation regarding the East Fairfax mid-block crossing shown on the site plan. They have raised some concerns regarding the location of the proposed crossing in proximity to the existing crosswalk at the Fairfax and Douglas intersection. I believe the Public Works interim director, Zach Bradley, is with us and would like to address the Planning Commission tonight, so I'll let him speak more on that when I finish. The site plan application also includes several waivers requested by the applicant. Pursuant to the code, the Planning Commission may modify certain requirements of the zoning code where properties are developed under unified site plan or where district interpretation of these provisions would reduce the usable area of a site to a point that would preclude a reasonable use. Waivers include waiver to Section 48-1181 to reduce the required perimeter parking lot landscaping adjacent to non-residential zone properties to zero on the western property line and on the southern property line. The second waiver is to Section 48-1183 to reduce the required buffer strip between zoning districts, B3 and OD, to zero on the southern property line. As I mentioned earlier, the conditional rezoning is subject to proffers. Final proffered statement is provided in the attachments. The main objective of the proffers is to limit the uses on both properties by providing a list of prohibited uses. A variety of other uses is still permitted. Beyond that, the proffers will be minimal as this is a by right use in the commercial zones, and the purpose of the rezoning is to simply remove the existing proffers. Other conditions and commitments are mostly routine and generally include site plan improvements shown on the conceptual development and the final site plan. In terms of comprehensive plan and small area plan consistency, the future land use map designation of the properties is business, and the proposed zoning map amendment that will maintain B3 zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The rezoning and the proposed development plan are also consistent with the general vision towards a mix of commercial uses envisioned for this area in both the comp plan and small area plan. And that use would be a suitable use within the existing land use in that area, which includes three daycare facilities. That's all I have for the staff report. With that, staff recommends approval of the proposed motion. Happy to answer any questions, but otherwise, the applicant does have a presentation. And I think I also defer to Zach Bradley on his comments on the crosswalk.
All right. Thank you, Akeeta. Zach, do you want to give your comments right now?
Yeah, yeah, that works for me.
I appreciate the opportunity.
Or should I wait till after?
Yeah, Brett, I think I was gonna, I was actually just gonna let the applicant give their thing and then run through our questions in one fell swoop, just because they may actually.
I mean, there are questions for staff and then there are questions for the applicant. I mean, for me. I mean, they're kind of, and for me, anyway, they're different kind of questions. But it's up to you.
Well, I was hoping to do them all, you know, we're gonna ask questions of both, but that's fine. We've done it both ways. We can do staff questions out. Do you want to ask your question now or do you want to let Mr. Bradley give his commentary about the crosswalk?
I guess, my question's not about the crosswalk, but I guess, I guess we can let staff finish talking about the crosswalk.
Let's have the crosswalk thing, and then I'll run through everybody for staff questions. Then we'll bump over to the applicant, and then we'll do applicant questions. So, Mr. Bradley, take it away. I assume it's not too extensive, your comments. I read your report.
All right, no, I appreciate the opportunity to come before the Planning Commission tonight. I had typed a memo for council for the July 13 meeting, and there were some questions that came about. So I wanted to be here tonight to kind of elaborate and explain some of the logic behind our objection with the mid-block crosswalk as proposed. And there's really three main points to our concerns. The first one being the simplest, any mid-block crosswalk proposed, especially in the state of Virginia, has to have a warrant analysis performed. That's a veto requirement, and it's a requirement of the manual on uniform traffic control devices. And that has not been submitted to date. So that's number one. Number two, the location of the proposed crosswalk does eliminate advanced pedestrian warning signage. I understand that there are bump outs being put in at Douglas and at the proposed crosswalk. However, bump outs are not an advanced warning feature. Whether it violates directly the American with Disabilities Act or not is a gray area. As once, and that is because once pedestrian features are installed, they can't be removed. Now, these are signs, these are advanced warning signs, and they are optional, but it is a gray area. However, it is also making a crosswalk less safe at the expense of a new crosswalk. Obviously, without advanced warning signage, a driver isn't going to know that there's a crosswalk coming up. And we, as the Department of Public Works, do not feel that that is the right thing to do. We feel it contradicts the spirit of ADA, and that alone could have an increase in liability if it is determined that that does violate ADA. So that's the second one. And then the third one, this, the spacing of crosswalks as set forth by the National Association of City Transportation Officials. I believe it's, let me verify that. Yes, the City Transportation Officials. Even in the most urban of environments, crosswalk spacing should not be less than 120 feet. And this crosswalk is at about 90 feet. So it also violates the best practices of engineering, which alone, if something were to happen, that will increase the city's liability by itself. The most extreme and recent example I can think of is Flint, Michigan. Obviously, everybody knows about the water problems they have had. And the reason they've had those is because they did not follow the best practices of engineering in test the transitioning from an underground water source to a surface water source. They just went ahead and did it. So that was where their big fault was in that. And I understand that's an extreme example, and that, you know, this is not on that caliber of scale. However, it's still the reality of the situation with the mid-block crosswalk as proposed. So I just wanted to clarify those points and why we're objecting. We have no issue if, we're actually requesting the applicant move it down to the shared entrance on North Fairfax Street. That would serve the existing building. And that's the building with, I think, Welsh printing. I think there's a brewery in there and several other facilities, along with the new proposed development. It more than exceeds the recommended spacing. It doesn't impact the existing advanced warning signage. And because it's at an entrance, we would not consider it a mid-block crosswalk. So that location would eliminate all three of our concerns. So that's really all I had to say on that. I appreciate the opportunity again to clarify that and be able to present. So if there's any questions, I'll open it up.
All right. Thank you for that detailed explanation. Definitely helpful. All right, let's, I have made a list of people in no particular order, although Brett is at the top because I know he has questions. So Brett, do you want to give us your questions for staff? Get their response, and I'll get on the list, and then once we're done, we'll jump over to the applicant.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, were you talking to me? I just dropped out for a second.
Yeah, yeah, just go ahead with your questions for staff now. That'd be great.
Yeah, my question for Ms. Ruzi, and it's kind of an overall threshold question, for lack of a better term. It's just, you know, obviously, we heard this case from a site plan perspective in a work session back in February. And I guess my question is, you know, the rezoning, obviously, clearly was on, it was there from '03. And so I just, I'm trying to understand, you know, why was it not discussed at that time? I mean, why are we back now with talking about a rezoning, I guess more like a proffer amendment in order to allow this to go forward? I mean, I read through the applicant's statement, they seem to, I don't know, they mentioned something about an invalid application. So I don't know what that, when they say, "We feel it's an invalid application," but I don't know what they're referring to. So maybe if you could just give me some background, maybe other folks already know this, but to me, when I saw this come up on the agenda, I was frankly surprised because I thought, you know, we had dealt with the site plan, it was a by right issue. And next thing you know, now it's back for a rezoning or a proffer amendment, if you will. So maybe staff could give me some background on that part of it.
Sure, I can answer that, actually. So there was a little bit of back and forth with the applicant and staff, and we were also reviewing that question of the proffers, whether they apply, given the expired site plan internally as well. So there was a little bit of convincing to do with the applicant, and they did argue that because the city could not locate and executed a proffer statement that was both signed by the applicant and the city, they shouldn't be subject as proffers, in fact, the rezoning altogether should be invalid. So those questions, I think we were internally evaluating it, and we were talking to city attorney at the time, and we were also going back and forth with the applicant's attorney as well. So it took several months, and then we got stuck in COVID sort of meeting policies, and that's where we are here. But ultimately, staff and city attorney met and discussed the item, and we were going to move forward with the rezoning and action by council.
Okay. Follow-up part, follow-up question to that. And I know you've attached the proffers to our, in our agenda, but if you could just quickly for me, so was the problem proffer, was the actual, I mean, the plan itself, was the plan proffered or was it the uses? What was the hangup in the proffers? Or was it the plan itself? Like, was it actually a proffered site plan previously? What was the hangup?
Mr. Kreuzer, are we talking about the 2003 proffers?
Yes.
Well, I mean, just both. I mean, I want to understand kind of the changes, but yeah, I mean, both. I want to understand the '03 proffers, you know, and what the sticking point was there that, you know, would not allow this to go forward without the rezoning. And then, again, if you could just quickly summarize the changes now that are proposed. Because it's not like, sometimes, you know, I've seen like a red line version to see what proffers are being changed from the original from '03. And so it's kind of, so, you know, both, kind of, you can answer both of those. That would be helpful.
Sure. So both the, so let's start with the 2003 proffers. So those proffers were, in very first paragraph, I don't know if I've actually included in the attachments, but I think the ordinance is there, was tied, it tied development, the approved development to the proffers and to the property. So all three of those elements were tied together, and the current proffers also do that. So I think with, the two proffers are different in that the current proffers do not include some of the improvements that the 2003 proffers included. That was a large project, and this one's a smaller scope of project, different project altogether. So they're different in the sense of all the committed improvements, but they are the same. That this current proffers also tying the development and the property altogether. And I think that was the intent as well, because if, we wanted them to come back to council if they were going to propose a different use or a different building in the future or a different development.
Right. So it was the plan, I mean, the plan itself. So I mean, the first proffer now is the plat itself. So, and the previous proffer was for like something for the church? Is that what it was? It was like, were they gonna have Sunday School there or something? Is that?
Yeah. It was a massive facility that was gonna take up the entire two properties, and then they were gonna be building a spanning sort of overhead bridge to connect the church itself to these two properties. So it was a massive project. It was gonna be a multipurpose educational facility. There's cafes, play gyms, classrooms, those sort of stuff.
But it was still the same B3 zoning, right? So the '03 was still, they were gonna do that under B3?
That's right. They were rezoning from OD, which was the underlying zoning, to B3.
Okay. All right. So the B3 zoning continues to stand, but it's really a proffer amendment and as well as a new, a new development plan, a new rezoning plat. I just want to, again, just for the benefit of everyone who's there. Now, the other questions I have, and again, I don't know, yeah, I guess you didn't provide like a sort of a red line version of the proffers to see what's changing. I mean, are all the, I mean, the new set that we have in our agenda, the 13 proffers in there, I mean, are any of these carryover proffers from '03 entirely new?
Yeah, not at all. They are so different. I don't even know if it would make sense to do a red line, and the project, those two projects are so different. We did sort of ask ourselves whether this should be a proffer amendment rather than a rezoning and a new development altogether. Then we just went with the latter because they were just so different. Those proffers are extremely different.
Okay. So essentially, all those proffers are being, with this application, that entire set of proffers, and of course, I haven't seen those, but they're all being deleted essentially, stricken, removed from the property. And now this new set is gonna completely supersede that. I mean, that, and that, I mean, that maybe should be said somewhere. I don't know. I mean, normally, like, as you know, proffers continue to run with the land unless it's explicitly, you know, removed. And so, I mean, this application, I suppose, is doing that, but it might be helpful. And that's something maybe for the attorneys to sort out, but typically, I would, you know, you'd want to see that so there's no confusion, even if they're entirely different. And so, and again, and then I guess with that, so putting that aside for a moment. So the proffers that we have, is staff in agreement, supporting these proffers at this point? Is staff endorsing the, this July 14 version? I mean, I know there's something here about the crosswalk, there's some other stuff in here about uses that are, the applicant has said they won't have other things. I know staff have reviewed them. Is staff in agreement at this point? Staff supporting the adoption of these proffers?
Yeah, yeah. We didn't have specific comments from other city staff on the proffers. We've all looked at it, and there's been several iterations, but it's mostly been sort of clarifying and grammar corrections so far.
All right, well, just for, I mean, that's something we can talk about, and maybe just for, again, my colleagues, my fellow commissioners' benefit. I mean, anything in those proffers is open to discussion, and we should feel free to discuss the things that are in there, including when they list, you know, permitted uses, uses they don't want to see in the future. I know this is being brought forward for a very specific use, but obviously, the B3 zoning, you know, might allow for many other things. And they've put forward a use of some things that I think we might, in general, I think, you know, it's a good list of things we might not want to see over there. But anyhow, I mean, everyone should just know that that list of proffers and any commitments in there is something that we should talk about, and we should provide any comments on that to council because it's all, since we're in a rezoning situation, those are all open for discussion and debate. So just so everybody knows, I mean, they're draft now, and they're not official until council essentially accepts them. So anyhow, just to put that out there. I mean, at this point, like, I don't have specific comments on those because I thought I might have, you know, I needed more background on the original set. But I think it's something everyone should keep in mind as far as, you know, again, commitments the applicant's making through these and anything we might want to see. In addition, you know, we should, we should look at that carefully as part of this discussion. So I guess that's all. I'll shut up for now, but I just wanted to, you know, get those things out there. Thank you.
All right, thanks a lot. I'll just go through this randomly generated list. Ms. Teets, do you have any questions for staff about this?
No, I don't.
All right. What about Mr. Puntz? Do you have any questions or comments for staff?
Mr. Kreuzer covered what I wanted to ask.
All right, Ms. Weiss, what about you?
I do have two questions for staff, both of which are for Mr. Bradley, so I'm glad he's here. I understand the value of best practice engineering, design standards, and compliance with that. But having been, having driven on East Fairfax Street many times during daytime hours, the proposed crosswalk is a very commonly used space, and that's my anecdotal, non-scientific experience, you know, experience here. I guess my question is, are there any workarounds for additional signage? Like, why does the signage need to be removed? any workarounds for additional signage? Like, why does the signage need to be removed? So, I guess one question is, can we do anything about the signage, or it's just, it is what it is, and we can't deviate, there's no variations? And the second question, maybe this is not for staff, maybe this is for the applicant, but I'll just put that out there. Is there a possibility of delaying that crosswalk until such time as you can have the study done that would, you know, give you the traffic information? And I have a second question on stormwater, but maybe I'll just stop with the crosswalk question for now?
Yeah, let's tackle that for Mr. Bradley.
Yeah, so for the advanced warning signage has to be placed about 90 to 100 feet in advance of a crosswalk. So, it has to come out. There's no other place to put it. There's no option to have one sign cover both crosswalks, that doesn't exist. So, the short answer is, if the crosswalk goes in, the signage comes out, and there's no signage that can ever go back up, because we can, but, I mean, once the crosswalk's in, it has to remain, right? So, there's no, there's no going back once the decision is made. As far as delaying the crosswalk, you know, it violating and putting crosswalks too close against best practices still has liability concerns. If the applicant can show that it meets a warrant analysis, DPW will revisit the issue and reconsider its stance. I could say that.
Okay. Thank you. My second question is on stormwater. There was a note in Attachment 6 that says this area, let's see, the current proposed development for the 10-year storm is reducing 10-year runoff by 4%. And then it compares the site, it says, if there was no existing onsite detention system, the reduction would be 18% reduction of runoff, which strikes me as, I don't, I mean, this is excessively judgmental, but that strikes me as disingenuous, because it makes sense to me to compare to current conditions, not conditions that don't exist. So, I wanted to get the stormwater team's view of, do you agree with the statement in Attachment 6 that we believe our proposed design meets the intent of the staff request to reduce the site runoff by 10%, when it appears to be only reducing it by 4% relative to current conditions? If I'm reading that right?
So, admittedly, I am not a stormwater engineer. I'm a transportation engineer by trade. And I can say DPW had originally requested a 10% reduction. However, after further conversations with both the engineer and the developer, it's technically infeasible to try and obtain anything further with the current site layout. The way they're obtaining it now is with an underground pipe. I forget the dimensions, so I apologize for that. There's a large oversized pipe with a small outlet on it. So, all of that underground pipe, in essence, acts as underground storage. Unfortunately, with how, how close that is to the surface, you know, we can't make it any bigger, we can't, it can't really be extended. So, trying to achieve that 10% reduction would require reevaluating the site as proposed. So, DPW was satisfied with the 4% reduction as proposed. As far as the 18% reduction, I would have to defer to the the design team for an answer tonight. Otherwise, I'd have to get back with planning commission on further information.
This is Karen White from Walter Phillips. I was planning to touch on this during our presentation, so do you want me, I can address it now, or I can kind of talk through it then?
If it's straightforward, let's just, if it ties into some narrative, you can save it, otherwise, we can just tackle it now.
Well, okay. So, I guess, I guess, just I want to be clear that, so the 10% reduction was a requirement as soon as kind of the project got kind of moved to the rezoning. So, to be clear, the 10% reduction is not the requirement for by right, and I want to make it, make sure everyone's aware that we are meeting the current state requirements for the site. And by doing that, we are reducing the one-year storm by 10%. The 10-year storm by 4%. And I guess the reason we did that other calculation is the thought was that if for some reason that, because basically, that 18% number, that's as if, if that parking lot today, if something happened to that detention system in that parking lot today, and it failed, or it clogged, and it didn't work anymore, the existing site runoff from that parking lot existing today versus what we're proposing is an 18% reduction. So, that's where that number came from.
All right. Thanks for that clarification. Ms. Weiss, do you have more questions about this, or other things?
Yeah, I guess just following up on the comment that the 10% reduction from the 10-year storm was part of the rezoning discussion. I hadn't picked that up from the documentation, so I wonder if the staff has a comment on that. I wasn't sure whether it showed up in any of the documents, actually.
Yeah, I can speak to that. The 10% reduction is a standard ask from DPW on anything with proffers or voluntary concessions on it. We do, I mean, as with this project, if there is an issue of obtaining that, you know, that's more of a, an additional goal than a hard and fast requirement. We don't want to stifle development or cause an undue burden on a site with that. So, we feel that Walter Phillips and the developer have met the intent of that, and we're, we are satisfied with the stormwater as a design.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Is that all you have for now, Ms. Weiss? Mr. Wooddis, do you have anything?
Yeah, just real quick for Mr. Bradley. I generally follow what we're talking about with the crosswalk here. Is it possible that staff brings up a graphic so I can see this visually? I mean, I'm looking at one, Attachment 2, page 5. I mean, that's just the one I'm finding here, but I just, I want to make sure I understand that because of the directions, what they were heading, you know, eastbound or westbound. This is just the one I see, but if we could just give me a quick summary of this issue. I think, I think I got it, but I want to make sure. That's the one I'm looking at. But you can pick whatever one you'd like. That's the one.
There's a color rendering in the music.
Yeah, I have that up as well, yes.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So, this is the perfect graphic to show it on. So, you'll see at East Fairfax and Douglas, you'll see the existing crosswalk shown in the, with the white striping there. With this development, there's a proposed bump out on that corner, which is going to allow separation of those crosswalks, which is, it's a very good thing. It's what ADA prefers and what we are supposed to try and achieve. So, separating them is good. Our concerns lie with, as you're, as you're at that crosswalk at the intersection, and you move to the left on the screen, the center-to-center spacing of that crosswalk and the mid-block crosswalk shown is about 90 feet. We are proposing to the developer to extend that, or to move the mid-block crosswalk a little further left to the shared entrance, which is it's in between the two buildings. It's kind of where the car is turning from the gray into the white. I don't know if we really have a preference. No, no, no. 90 feet to, I think, 180 feet? Maybe just shy? And it's also at a, it's at what's considered to be a high-volume commercial driveway, which is considered a in essence, it's treated as a street. It's not a street, but because it has enough traffic at it, it's considered a street, which removes the mid-block crosswalk requirements. I will say, by doing that, you know, there is an opportunity in the future for the city to come back and, in essence, retrofit a crosswalk at the proposed location. You know, I'm not going to say it's going to be in a year, five years, 10 years. It's at some unknown point in the future. We could potentially put one in once, once I hate the word.
I got, I got, I got it. This was helpful to, I'm sorry, Mr. Bradley. You've already spoke on it, so I don't need you to repeat it, but I, I now follow what we're talking about. And I guess this is not a question for staff, and I'll hold off until it's time, but I would love to understand the objection to moving it 90 feet to the west. So, that's, I'll hold that question till later. And then, the other thing is, I just want to understand, I got to bring it up. But on the staff report, it just talks about the fiscal impact. I was really surprised by these numbers. It looks like an empty lot. I assume this is just property taxes is responsible for, I got to find it here, but it's something like, my recollection is like 36,000, and now with the new building, it's going to be 41,000. I'm doing it by memory. Where is that? So, can we just, why such a small difference for a commercial use that's supposed to be generating tax revenue for the city?
Yeah, I was surprised too when I first saw that, but that's really the best information available from the assessor and our economic development division. There wasn't a big difference between the parking lot, real estate taxes versus after development of a commercial building. So, yeah, it's a small difference between, it's like $5,000 or something. That's, that's the information I got. So, that's correct.
Okay, yeah. All right. Well, that seems like a really small impact. I mean, one of the main selling points of this was that it was going to generate tax revenue as opposed to being an idle parking lot. So, that's interesting information to me, but thank you. All right, that's all I got, Mr. Rankin.
All right. Do you have any questions for staff? Mr. Stevens, I don't know if I got caught up in the echo there.
Okay, yes, I can hear that now. Mr. Wooddis took away my question, my main question, which was the $6,000 difference in revenue. It just seems totally unbelievable. So, there's got to be more to that than meets the eye. The only other question I have is for Mr. Bradley. He notes the potential liability, but when I hear that term, I think of it being in the lane of the lawyers or the insurance people. I'm just wondering, obviously, you know, his knowledge is extremely more informed than my own, but is this something that is a legal issue that we, that the risk that you're identifying is considered to be, or is this your experience as an engineer, if I could put it that way?
Yeah, so this is basically my experience as an engineer and other other issues throughout the country that have come up, that have not followed the correct engineering practice or the best practice. You know, there are exceptions to best practices. Usually, there needs to be a valid reason. You know, so, I mean, I'm not going to say that we can never ever put a crosswalk closer than 120 feet. But, you know, there needs to be a valid reason to it, and not not just because somebody wants it. That's not, that's never a valid reason. So, you know, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not going to promise there's an increase in liability. I don't want to imply that there's a guarantee of that, but it is something that I have seen several times in recent memory. And I, you know, it's not within my purview or staff's purview to approve something we think is going to increase the city's liability. That is something that, you know, we're going to bring to planning commission, or council, or whatever the correct wording commission is, voice our concerns, and, you know, at the end of the day, you know, however you guys vote is, you know, we'll back that, and we'll make, we'll make the crosswalk as safe as possible with whatever that decision is.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Stevens, just one final question for you. The small area plan for this area reads as follows. Design should promote pedestrian-oriented redevelopment. It should create a pedestrian-scale environment. Is your view that this proposed development meets that, or at least is reasonably consistent with that requirement?
I think so, yeah. Both the comp plan and the small area plan actually encourage walkability in this area. So, a mid-block crosswalk, and it's important to know that between the crosswalk on Douglas and South Washington, that stretch of street is about 525 feet. So, I think a mid-block crossing there is consistent with that walkability principle outlined in the small area plan.
I was actually thinking in terms of the design of the building itself and its location back from the sidewalk and so forth.
I see. I'm sorry. Well, I think at the work session, we sort of extensively discussed this. The staff's recommendation was to move the building closer to the street, in fact, to the corner of the intersection at Douglas and Fairfax. We thought that would give give the streetscape a better pedestrian, would create a better pedestrian environment, and I think that was consistent with the small area plan. But as I said earlier, applicant did consider that, and after studying it, told us that really wasn't feasible.
Good, thank you.
Is that all you have, Mr. Stevens?
It is.
All right. I'll make a couple of quick comments and ask questions. My comment on the crosswalk is, I think the, for me anyway, the, like Ms. Weiss said, you know, there's an entrance right up there, stairs up to the church, so it sort of just seems like, well, people are going to cross here, whether there's a crosswalk or not. But I put a lot of stock in the experts, and certainly, everything that Mr. Bradley said makes sense to me. I think a crossing at that, where the two lots meet, would, seems like it would be a good compromise, and I think the reality is, most of the time when people are going to be crossing up to the church is going to be when both sides of that street are parked with cars, and the traffic on that street is going to be pretty slow either way. I don't, doesn't seem like it would be a big use for that mid-block crossing when, you know, just with people coming to this new business, since they won't have a reason to go over to the church. So, I'm not too worried about it. I do have, my main question is, mostly just, I'm curious, but well, here's one question. How did 116 get their zoning? If the proffered conditions on the rezoning were never met?
So, that, it was done under a building permit application. So, that used to be a vacant building on that lot, and then, I believe, Fairfax on LLC came in for a building permit to renovate the interior and exterior of that building, but I'll defer to them on what they're.
That building predated the proffered rezoning in 2003 or '04 or whatever.
Yes, yeah.
That makes sense. And then, I guess my other sort of question is, so they, I understand that there was, it had an OD zoning, and then they did a proffered rezoning to B3. Proffers were never met, so now we're stuck. But if it fell back to OD, what's permitted, would this use be permitted under the OD zoning, which I know is a weird zone, and we've talked about getting rid of it and all this other stuff, but...
It would be, actually. I specifically asked that from the zoning administrator, and this use would be permitted in OD as well.
So, what is the logic behind going through the, what we're going through now versus just scrapping that proffered rezoning and just going back to the original zoning?
There's setback implications because of where the building is, and I have to remember, because I did look at it in the OD context, but there would be setback implications where they're not meeting setbacks, and they'd have to go to BZA to vary from the code on that.
Because what I'm trying to get to is, it had a zone that had rules to it. They came in with this big grand plan with these proffers that made people that made people at the time say, sure, we will change the zoning and give up things like setbacks or whatever that that zone required because the proffers make it all worth it. That doesn't happen, which is fine. But then we go to the B3 zone without these grand proffers. You know, not that anyone did this on purpose, but are we inadvertently letting them rezone it without sort of the scrutiny that it should have? Because if we're OD right now and they want a different setbacks, they take a different path. I don't...I'm genuinely favorable. So I don't...I'm not saying that as a like, damn, I'm going to shoot this thing down. I'm just, you know, because the proffers that they are offering are, I mean, they're fairly limited. They're just sort of like, I don't even know. I mean, a more detailed question would be like, are the uses that are being forbidden in the proffers uses that are already forbidden in OD? And if so, that's not really a proffer, that's just kind of keeping it consistent. Maybe not. But that's what I was trying to wrap my head around is like, why are we doing this? If we could just go back to OD, it sounds like we're doing this because maybe this is easier than going to the BZA to get a variance on some setbacks.
Well, it's a good question, a fair question. I think it's important to remember that the comp plan designation on the future land use map is business for this area. So rezoning back to OD wouldn't be consistent with that. Same in the small area plan, it envisions business for the area. So I think keeping it B3 is consistent, but going back to OD is lesser density commercial use is permitted on that lot, wouldn't be consistent, I don't think.
So it's not as simple...because it was rezoned with the proffers before, it's not as simple as just undoing that? It's literally, you got to rezone it again with different proffers or go back and build the original thing?
Yeah, to remove those proffers, the process is a conditional rezoning or a rezoning.
Okay. All right, that's all the questions I have for staff. So unless there...well, I'm just going to assume there aren't any questions. If you have more questions for staff, hold them for later. So let's have the applicant share what they came to share, please.
Okay, hi, this is Karen with Walter Phelps. I'm going to share my screen and share my present. It says, ask someone in the meeting to make you the presenter.
That's got to be...
Okay.
I have some in this meeting when it comes to that stuff.
It's not letting me...oh, here we go. Are you able to see the color rendering?
I am not seeing it yet. All right, something's coming, now I see it.
Okay.
The color rendering, I see it.
Okay, great. I think this will be pretty quick. I think we've covered a lot of the details we wanted to talk about. I'll just run through it quickly. And then, so I kind of have some renderings and some shots. And then I have all the detailed plans in the back here. So if we need detailed questions, we can scroll to those when I'm done here. So as we've been looking at, here's the site, 130 East Fairfax. Again, here's just the overall picture we've been talking about. Here's the original South Gate retail building. Here's our proposed building here, the Tower Square Shopping Center here, the Episcopal Church, Fairfax and Douglas Avenue. Just some kind of highlights. I think this has mostly been reviewed. It's about 0.88 acres. The zone is B3. The permitted height is 55 feet. We're about 28 feet height, so we're, you know, only a one-story building. From the parking, the parking is shared between the two properties, the 116 and 130. The total spaces required are 89 and 90 are provided. And we are providing 12 bike spaces, six racks up front along Fairfax Street. And the loading is shared between the two properties. And the proposed use on this site, they're not anticipating the need for an actual loading space, but they are sharing them on 116. Here's just kind of tried to blow up the area. This is pretty much the area we've been talking about so far. The mid-block crossing, the curb bump out here at the corner to reduce the pedestrian crossings as they cross the street. And just to kind of summarize, there's a two-foot landscape strip here, utility strip. There's a five-foot concrete sidewalk. And then there's this 18-foot setback here, which we're proposing seven black gum trees. And then here is the bike parking I had just mentioned in this area right here. As for the site, this also shows the main entrance here and the handicap accessible parking in this area. Just the landscape waivers, just to kind of show on the plan where we're requesting the waivers. It's basically where these red lines are, which are the property lines. And so since the way the site, the existing site is laid out with this existing drive aisle here, this is existing parking and existing shared drive aisle here, we're not able to provide the perimeter parking lot landscaping since basically this is adjacent to the drive aisles and the parking here. So those are the two landscape waivers we're requesting. The stormwater management, you know, we did discuss it. There is something there on site today. We are reducing the one-year storm by 10% and the 10-year storm by 4%. We're meeting the current phosphorus removal requirements and the runoff requirements. Here's just a picture of the latest elevation I have. I don't believe this has changed since you last saw this. Just one picture there. And that's really all I had, very quick and easy, just to kind of get through the highlights. And again, I have all the detailed plans if we have any specific questions.
All right, thank you. I'm going to go back through my list again, same order. So, Mr. Krasner, any questions for the applicant?
Well, I guess, I mean, I'm a little torn because, I mean, there are a lot of things I think we'd like to see on this property. I mean, last time we talked about this, as far as like, again, this was a real rezoning. You know, we might look to push for, you know, even better stormwater management beyond just the, you know, close to what's required, you know, the minimum required. I mean, same thing goes for aspects of the design of the site. I mean, some of these issues I brought up in a general way back in the winter. And at the time, it was really a by right site plan situation. And so our ability was really more of a recommendations. But, you know, the applicant was really free to pursue, you know, the site plan if they met the site plan. So here we are now in a rezoning. And, you know, I guess it's essentially the very, essentially the same plan. I mean, there are some changes, but not many. It's essentially the same plan that we saw, you know, back in the winter. I know this is more of like a soliloquy than a question. But, you know, I guess, you know, my questions would be, what could be done? You know, like stormwater is a good example. You know, obviously, you're taking a site that is, you know, largely impervious to day, so I get it. But now we're in a rezoning situation. And so now it is, you know, as was discussed at the beginning by staff, it's now we're in a legislative situation ultimately for council, but we're going to make some recommendations to them. And so my questions would really be, you know, what could you do, you know, beyond the minimum for stormwater? You know, understanding, I don't understand, you know, some limitations. But, you know, what could be done here? And same thing goes for even some of the layout questions. I mean, I brought this up at the beginning. I understand it's really being designed for a very specific user in a very specific way. But, you know, again, it raises all kinds of issues about, you know, what could happen to this building in the future. The proffers don't really spell that out, other than to say it can't be, you know, an adult business or a pawn shop or other things. But so I have all kinds of, and these are kind of big picture questions about, you know, what could be here. But, you know, I have all kinds of concerns from a design perspective on everything from the width of the, you know, the pedestrian sidewalk in front of the building to stormwater to other things. And so, you know, so I don't know. I mean, I know just, you know, threw a lot at you. But at least starting with stormwater, for example, what could be done? Could something be done to try to exceed the minimum requirements for this property?
I think we're...I'm going to scroll to like a layout plan that shows more detail here. I think where we kind of struggled is that, so we have a very shallow invert here and a very shallow cover on this pipe, which is why you see we have multiple detention pipes kind of stacked up here to get minimum cover and minimum storage. So, you know, I think, you know, I think it is, you know, this plan was always designed when it was by right to meet the state requirements, and we do. And then, you know, kind of within the past month or so is when we've started talking about this extra 10%. So we tried to look at a way of how would we do that? And I just, due to the shallowness of this pipe and this outfall, so this is an existing outfall that outfalls this direction, we had trouble finding a way to add additional pipe storage because these are 27-inch pipes and they're just really kind of the minimum cover to get that volume. So that's kind of how we were struggling. We, you know, it was tough to meet to begin with, but we were able to meet the requirements. So, you know, we felt good about it, so...
What about larger underground detention? I mean, what about, you know, other types of methods or structures that could be done?
We have been looking at other options because of this, because it is so tight to actually build. And it's just the problem is we can't go deeper. And that's where our, you know, and then there's a coverage, you know, issue too when you go... because this slopes away, so this slopes down, so then you start getting less cover when you get to this area. So it's just kind of a balance of really finding something that works.
All right, I mean, I guess with that, I mean, like I said, it's not necessarily engineering questions, but it's just, again, like I said, we're in a, now we're in a rezoning situation. So I get it that this was initially by right. And we reviewed it that way the first time, and that's fine. But, and now, you know, it's brought, it's coming back to us in a slightly different, in a slightly different way. And they're slightly different, in a slightly different environment, you know, legally speaking and procedurally speaking. And so I guess for me, you know, and Mr. Rankin actually, I think, hit on this in his comments before as far as, you know, is this really still, you know, it's a rezoning, it's a, you know, but it's really still kind of being presented as a by right B3 project? And I don't know if it, you know, really is meeting the, you know, what a rezoning is really supposed to meet as far as comp plan policies and other issues that then get brought in. So more of a statement than a question, but you answered my question about the stormwater. As far as I can understand, there may be some great issues here as far as, you know, right, the shallowness and things like that you need to deal with. But it would be great if we do more to take a site that was previously, again, in a previous world, it was paved over and with very little stormwater management. And now we have an opportunity to do more. And every inch, every old parking lot in the city is a candidate, I think, to improve the situation. So, you know, that's kind of my overall comment on stormwater. And the other stuff, I guess I'll leave maybe till the end of the, end of this part of the meeting to discuss further. So that's it, that's it for me, Mr. Chairman, for now.
Thank you, Mr. Krasner. Ms. Teetz, do you have some questions for the applicant?
No, I do not.
All right, Mr. Puentes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two questions. So, and sorry, Mr. Modisca actually kind of raised this in his comments. So what is the, what is the problem moving with the, from the applicant's perspective of moving the crosswalk
Mr. Chairman, this is Bob Young. I'd be happy to answer that question. In short, we're not prepared to fight about the crosswalk. It's my belief that if we don't put a crosswalk in here on Sunday morning, when that parking lot's filled with people going to church, it's placed only at the request of the church, the owners of the property. And that crosswalk goes from the parking lot directly to the entrance to the church. If the city does not want it there and wants it moved down to the end of the block or, you know, by the driveway or the street, as Zach properly characterized it, we'll be glad to move it there. It's my belief that what will happen on Sunday morning is, instead of people walking 80 or 90 feet down to the corner, crossing in the crosswalk, and then walking back to the entrance to the church, they'll simply cross the street. It's not something that we as developers feel strongly about. So I'll just leave that issue at that. I have a problem with respect to best practices in the engineering world, but that's a whole different topic. So let me just leave it there.
Yeah, we'll bring you in as a speaker series later to talk about that.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, actually, on that point, I think, and I share that too. And no offense to the engineers that are listening to this now. But I think, I mean, this organization, NACTO, the National Association of City Transportation Officials, pretty much does nothing but trying to figure out how to make cities more walkable and to mitigate the damage that we've done for the last generation or two from our auto-oriented design. So I would, just my fellow commissioners, I would put, I should put a stake in what NACTO says about this. And there, as Zach went through, they really do think about this a lot, and it's not a traditional engineering type recommendations. And I do share the concern of making sure, we want to make sure this is as safe as possible. If this is such a safety hazard, maybe when we talk about proffers, which I agree are... I don't quite understand the proffers. They don't really seem like they're doing anything to, as Steph says, to mitigate the possible negative effects of unrestricted zoning, right? So they just seem like procedural kind of things to me. So one proffer we could do is some kind of mitigation plan for safety in this area. I don't know whether they're physical barriers or something else, but if it's such a hazard, I do think that is something that we should address. But I don't think these things are mutually exclusive. So I don't know why there's such a barrier. The other question I have is the, is why is not feasible to move the building or to build the building closer to the curb or to the street as staff suggested? We keep saying that applicant felt it was not feasible, but we haven't explained why.
I'd be happy to address that, Mr. Puentes. The reason that we can't move it is because the church, very early on in the process of our negotiations with them on building this building, drew a very red line in the sand, saying that they did not want the building up close to the street. They wanted it as far away from the church as possible. And they went so far as to say that they would not permit it. They have the right as the owners of the property to make that judgment. And so we're left as developers and lessees of the property to either build the building in the current location as proposed or not build it at all. So that's our dilemma.
It's absolutely bewildering to me, frankly. I think it would solve some of the problems I think we have with this right now and a lot of things that, I forget, one of my commissioners was talking about, making sure that it's trying to enhance the area. It just seems like it would be such an easy thing to do. I don't, I just don't understand the applicant or the owner's opposition to this. But I guess that's not for me to decide. And then I just had some questions, and we can talk about this later too, about the, about the proffers. As the chairman mentioned, they don't really seem like they're offering very much. I mean, they just seem very, very procedural. And I'm curious about the permitted uses and then the restrictions. Some of these, I think, are obvious, firearm establishments and so forth. But greenhouses, carpentage shops, I said, some of these things seem unnecessarily specific. And I just, I don't know why we'd be putting some of these things in here in the future. They seem more like proffers for the church than for the city itself. It seems like it's unnecessarily hampering our ability to do anything in the future. But that's more of a comment than a question. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Weiss, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do. The, yeah, the first, I wanted to follow up on Mr. Puentes's question about why the parking can't be located in the back and why the building can't be moved forward. And I know we asked this question during the work session. And my recollection is that the answer was different. I thought there was an answer that it was technically infeasible because of the location of utilities. And so, you know, I guess if it's, I guess I just wanted to follow up on that, is that true? And maybe this is a, yeah, I'd be humble, I don't know the legal aspect here, but, you know, this is an owner requesting something that's sort of contrary to the small area... the, the smaller area plan and the vision for the city, um, but we don't have an opportunity to engage with the owner and that legally that might just be what it is and we have no ability to engage. But I, I guess my question maybe for staff is, you know, is there an ability to engage with the owner or is that just out of the planning commission's hands? And this is no longer by right, I guess is the issue, right? This is rezoning. So I guess I'm a little bit, I, I have some questions about whether that is something that we really should be pushing on more, given that it's the vision for the city in this area.
Well, I think the planning commission could encourage improvements to, to draft proffers, as Mr. Krasner just said, they are draft until they're all approved on August 10th. So, I mean, tonight we'd like to hear from the planning commission, that's the purpose of this meeting as well, to get your set of recommendations to the city council. So if you, if you have comments that you think would substantially improve the project, um, feel free to include them and it would be up to the city council to incorporate them or not at the final hearing on Monday. I mean, as, as explained by the applicant, those were the two reasons given to staff that the building could not move to the corners. One, there were some, uh, pipes located within that area and, um, two, that the, the church did not want the building closer to the street. The, the site plan would have been by right in B3 if there weren't proffers, but, but there are proffers. So now we're sort of at the rezoning discussion. So, um, yeah, planning commissions welcome to, to, to encourage, um, improvements to the proffers as they please.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll just put that out there as an improvement to the proffer that I would like to explore. And, you know, there's, that was imperative question to the applicant, but I have another question for the applicant. The architecture is very much designed for one large indoor recreation space. And as we know, um, you know, the coronavirus pandemic has, I would assume, affected the economics of those businesses. So I guess I'm just wondering, I, I have no knowledge whatsoever about the financial viability of Scramble, but if that retail use falls through because they can't make it through this pandemic, are, is there anticipation of a similar substitute business? Or, you know, I think once this building is built as planned, we're locked into large indoor recreation spaces rather than some, you know, more multiple smaller retail spaces. So I guess the question is to the applicant is, is there any flexibility on the, on the architecture and do you anticipate the occupants that you are, you know, are planning to have there?
Uh, yeah, I'd be glad to address that. Uh, we're in close touch with Scramble. As most of you know, they have an existing location in Alexandria. We have a lot of confidence in their ability to stay in business. Obviously if we didn't have a tenant, we wouldn't build the building. They are, they have reopened and they're able to be profitable even at a much smaller scale in terms of number of children in the facility in Alexandria. It's, it's our belief that there would be tremendous demand for this. If Scramble was not to succeed, um, I think as, as you've suggested, the, this would be used, the, the different tenant would be some other kind of indoor recreation, likely oriented toward children, but it could just as easily be, um, basketball, um, soccer, any of the youth athletics for which there's an infinite demand inside the Beltway, you know, in our area. So.
Okay. That's, that's helpful, that's, that's good to know. Then I guess just the last question on architecture, is there a possibility for more windows on the front-facing seat because it is a large box?
I thought we had added windows. Care, did we not?
Uh, this is the latest of these, we added, there's some windows in this area. I don't have the, uh.
Yeah, those are the windows that were added from the last time.
Right.
As well as the roofline being altered.
Yes, yeah. This used to be a flat roof, I believe, and this angle was added.
I'm sorry, I wasn't specific. I was asking about windows in that dark gray zone right here.
I think that there are some interior, uh, plans that would preclude windows. I don't know whether they're bathrooms or locker rooms or, or just what it is, but I'm pretty sure that's the reason.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
All right. Thanks, Ms. Weiss. Uh, Mr. Modiska, questions for the applicant?
Uh, no, no additional questions. Uh, Mr. Puentez asked the question I had and I under, I now understand it. My sense, it's not a question, my, my comment would be that moving the crosswalk seems to make sense to me based on what I heard here. So, uh, that will be something that I would hope we could put into a motion once that's made.
All right. Mr. Stevens, question, applicant?
Yes, um, I'm inspired by the late, uh, Mr. Z to raise a couple of issues. There, there's no lead certification or environmental certification plan for the building as I understand it. So I presume, uh, from an energy efficiency perspective, the building is, will be guided by the state building code, uh, which is okay, but it's, it's, uh, you know, it's not exemplary. Mr. Young, however, has committed to, uh, installing a rooftop solar energy system, which is, uh, greatly appreciated. But it's, it's not a proffer, uh, so it, it seems like we have it as, uh, as a promise perhaps, but, uh, but just that, uh, as opposed to, let's say, the cottage, uh, project, which had the solar panels, uh, over the carport as a requirement to achieve additional density. So, uh, I don't know if there's, there's any way to kind of make it a little bit more certain, uh, but that would be, uh, something of interest. There was also some reference to trying to match the proffers of the Kensington. And one of the things that they did, uh, with that project is to include, uh, conduits, uh, for two parking spaces for future installation of electric charging, uh, stations. Conduit being a pretty, an expensive way to, uh, make that preparation for the future. And if you don't do it that way, it becomes very expensive and, and a barrier for, uh, for that feature. So that's, that's one thing I would, uh, would recommend. The last thing I had is we got the letter from, uh, Mr. Mukadi, uh, who lives apparently at the 200 East Fairfax Street location, concerned about, uh, various negative implications. And I'm just wondering if, uh, there's any way to ensure that whatever lighting, outside lighting is on that eastern facade, if we could, uh, ensure that it's not, uh, a problem for the inhabitants of that, uh, of that residence. And that's all I've got.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, may I address those items?
Yes, please do.
First of all, with respect to the solar panels, um, we intend to put them on, we will put them on, uh, if the planning commission wants them proffered, we'll be happy to proffer. Number two, as far as the lighting's concerned, um, code requires there to be full cutoff lighting and there are pretty strict regulations in terms of the amount of light that can leak from the site. So I can assure you that, that code will cover there not being any glare, um, going off the site. Now I can't remember the third item.
I forgot the conduit. Those are the main ones. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, let me address that. Uh, we're currently, uh, working with, uh, a private company to install, uh, EV, two EV charging stations in the back of the shopping center. Their thought being that the folks going to Aldi, going to the shopping center and eventually to this, um, this property will be able to use those and we hope to have those installed in the next, well, certainly before the building's done. But putting conduit in certainly won't be a problem as you suggest. So we can add that.
Very good.
All right. Um, I don't think I actually have any questions for the applicant. But now that we've been through it all, uh, it sounds like we may have a little bit of a discussion about tweaks to the motion. I mean, what's before us is a motion that covers two things. One is our general recommendation related to the rezoning. And then the other part of the motion is approval of the site plan, which would be contingent on the rezoning happening by city council. So, uh, I can see who unmutes. So if someone unmutes and wants to talk about any tweaks to this motion or any comment, I will call on you. This, this receives is still unmuted, but that's probably just because he was just talking. I didn't know if, uh, Mr. Krasner had any follow-up.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I mean, something I, I'm going to throw out there. I mean, I, I've, I've heard from multiple different folks on the commission, um, you know, some pretty significant concerns about, about, again, the state of the proffers, um, some other issues. And I guess the question I have is, you know, again, you know, this, this is, and this is, I don't know, a big picture thing and I don't mean to be cranky tonight, but it's, it's, it's a process thing. I mean, this thing has come back to us now, you know, in, in, again, with, you know, saying, okay, well now it's a rezoning and we want you to do the site plan, you know, and, you know, guess what, it's going to council next week. And so, you know, take it or it's kind of like, you know, I don't think staff intended to be take it or leave it, but, you know, it, to me, you know, in a, in a rezoning situation, you know, it, it's just a different, there's a whole different set of standards that, that, you know, based on the comp plan and based in code that we should be looking at. And the question is, does this really meet it or not? You know, some may say, well, it's just a technicality because there's old proffers. Well, you know, that is what it is. I hate to use that phrase these days, but, 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 uh, you know, here we are, you know, that, that's the history of the property and we didn't decide, um, that needed a proffer amendment or a rezoning. Other, other minds made that decision, uh, and it's, and it's come back, uh, in that way. And so the question I have is, is do we feel it's ready to go to council or are we ready to make a recommendation? Is it, can we put all that in a motion? I understand, I understand staff has tried to tee it up as best as they can, um, given what they have, but I guess the question is, can we put all our concerns into a motion? Or do we want to actually see some changes before we're ready to, to do that? I think Ms. Weiss raised a lot of significant concerns. I think you raised some significant concerns. I heard, again, Mr. Stevens raised concerns about things he'd like to see in the proffers related to environmental efficiency. And I, I, I guess the question I have, and this is for, you know, for discussion, um, is, is whether we're ready to make a motion. I don't know if I, put it this way, I don't know if I'm ready to vote on a motion. I mean, someone may be willing to make it and there may be enough folks that are willing to vote, but I don't know if I'm ready to vote on a motion, you know, given how many outstanding issues I've heard brought up today on this. So I'm, I'm kind of throwing that out there as, as for, for discussion, but, you know, is, is there, sometimes you get to a point where there's enough, you know, we're looking for a significant level of, of either revision or change or, or, um, that, you know, it's hard to put it all into a motion and really capture everything we want when we haven't actually seen it. We haven't seen it on the plan, we haven't seen it in the proffers, so.
Yeah. And I kind of. Yeah, I think we can talk about that. I mean, my, from my perspective, um, you know, the project is not the most exciting thing ever, uh, but the thing I struggle with is the use permitted in the old zoning design, OD. The future land use map and the smaller area plan calls for this to be B3. Here's a project that wants to go to B3, where do you, you know, and so it, I, I, I'm torn. On the one hand, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Krasner, but on the other hand, we've said in so much with our plans, we'd like this to be three, be, B3. These guys want it to be B3 to build a by right thing at B3, but we're gonna, we're gonna try to get them to do more because they happen to be stuck in a rezoning situation. I mean, I guess that's the way the world works and so maybe we can do that, but there was a little bit of awkwardness there to, for me. If this were zoned in a future land use, something totally different and they wanted to change it, then absolutely I would say like, well, let's make sure it's worth doing the change. But they're really just asking us to zone it to what we, we plan to zone it to someday and this is the opportunity to do it.
Well, I, and I get that and I, and I, 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 that's not lost on me. I do, I do understand that. And in some ways I view this more, you could argue it's more, I, I, Ms. Ruzzi mentioned this, whether it's a proffered condition, you know, amendment, um, versus, uh, versus a full-fledged rezoning. I mean, it's not in the sense that the district is, underlying district is B3, um, with proffers and, and it's staying B3. So, so I get that in the sense that the, the applicant here is not asking, um, for a new zoning district. He's not asking to upzone the property, if you will. You know, so I, I do get that part of it. But on the other hand, you know, if this came in, you know, as a, you know, B3, um, or under the old, under the OD, I guess the question is, would we, you know, accept some of the things we're sort of, I, I guess, accepting here? You know, and, and again, the concern that Ms. Weiss brought up about the viability of this site in the future, I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know if the, I mean, the comp plan it visions B3. Actually, and maybe this is a question like, I don't know, maybe I'm missing something. I mean, what is this use categor, and this maybe is for staff, uh, for Ms. Ruzzi, what is this use categorized as under the, under the ordinance? What, what do we call this proposed use?
Mr. Krasner, could you repeat that last bit? My son was talking at the same time.
No problem. What, what do we call this use under the ordinance? What, because obviously we don't list.
Oh, right. It's, 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 um, there is no clear category that's similar to this use. I think there's something, uh, close to a day camp. It would, it would be allowed, uh, because it's similar to a day camp.
Is that really what the zoning administrator has said? I mean, that's a different, maybe a different discussion, a threshold question. The zoning administrator has called this a day camp?
It's similar to that. We don't, we don't have a use that's kind of a day camp slash a cafe, because, uh, Mr. Yana said there's going to be wine, there's this kind of a restaurant and a cafe portion to this. We, we don't have anything similar to that defined into zoning code. I know that.
No, I understand, yeah, no, I know. It's not, it's not listed in the code. I guess the question is, I mean, is this the kind of use that the B3 really envisions? I mean, and this is a question, again, a bigger picture question, but since we're talking about, again, a rezoning, a legislative action, I mean, I'm going to talk big picture. I mean, is this really what the B envisions? Does the comp plan, when it calls for B3 for this site and for this part of town, is it really calling for an, an quasi, you know, what I would call quasi, you know, a, a recreation use and indoor, you know, almost again, and with an industrial type of footprint and floor plate? I mean, is that, because typically these kind of uses, I think I brought this up in February, if I recall. I mean, these kind of uses, they're typically found, you know, you, you'll see them in, in industrial parks and business parks, you know, places that have some, you know, flex space, um, you know, usually places where there's the larger, larger footprints and, and you can have high ceilings and, and you put in, and it's, again, more of a, you know, I, I don't know, I don't know what we call it. And I guess there's nothing else in the city quite like it, although I guess there is the other one, there's that other indoor jump place that's, um. Maybe the zoning administrator called that the same thing, but I guess that's an interesting question that, you know, if we, are we, it's really a daycare? I mean, that's, I guess, a question for the zoning administrator, um, if he's already made that determination, but, um, I mean, that's something that maybe, again, for the commission, I mean, this maybe, you know, is too late for this site, but do we, would we want to see a proliferation of, you know, indoor recreation uses in our B3 zone? You know, I would argue that it's not really what the B3, I think, envisions, um, you know, as far as the type of uses we would want to see, you know, in, in, as, as a business use. Um, so anyway, I mean, that's, uh, maybe it's too late on this one, but, uh, I, I just have all kinds of concerns about, about that aspect of it. And, and for me, I mean, there's still a lot of things that are hanging out there and, you know, I don't know if I'm ready to, to vote on something that to me seems like it still has a lot of things that, a lot of loose ends that have not been cleaned up. And we've made a lot of recommendations and it's one thing for the applicant to say, well, that's great, we'll take it under advisement and we'll bring it to council, but I'd like to see it, uh, before it goes to council to see what recommendations of ours, you know, really are going to be, um, incorporated because they're looking for planning commission's endorsement and I think that, in a rezoning, I think that's fair. So, um, so from my point of view, I, I don't know if I'm ready to vote on it, um, tonight, but maybe other people feel differently.
Mr. Krasner, this is Jim Snyder. I don't know if you guys can hear me or not.
We can hear you, Jim.
Uh, but one of the things to remember in B3, if you look down the South Washington Street quarter, a lot of B3 has been characterized by automobile oriented businesses, used car lots, garages, gas stations, et cetera. That's. That's one of the things that is characteristic of unfortunately, a lot of the B three development. This site and this project is a person oriented active site. I'm not saying it's the same thing, but for example, the bowling alley, which has people and activity and some retail to support that activity is another example of a recreation use in a large building in the city. Granted, that's an older building. A building of this shape and size could be used for retail use. There are many, you know, this is not a huge footprint. So the form and size of the building is, would not be unusual in a commercial area. But what I would say about B three is it's more lenient. And typically what we have gotten have been automotive oriented types of uses, which frankly has been problematic for this part of town. So something that is more people oriented, that involves, you know, active use of, by parents and, and children, you know, is a, is a welcome use compared to a parking lot with nothing going on in it or one of the commercial uses that typifies a lot of this South Washington Street quarter. So if you go, if you go out South Washington Street, you see a lot of not great developments. So, you know, it's a, it's a, it's an area of town that's changing over. In the small area plan, there was a grand idea for a town center if we got consolidation. And there was, there were groups that looked at that. But I think the timing and the economics were such that that was not able to happen. And so we're in basically a renovation phase and the, and infill phase in this area of trying to improve what was on the other side of this property, an abandoned shopping center, a failed abandoned shopping center. And then you've had the other shopping center that's been upgraded with a new Aldi. And, you know, you're in a renovation phase. 10, 15, 20 years from now, this, this may change to something where a redevelopment of some time may be appropriate. But, but compared to some other B three uses, which are prevalent in the city, you know, this is, I'd say more in line with what we'd want than what we typically have been getting.
Thanks, Jim.
I appreciate that, Mr. Snyder. I do, I do, I appreciate that. I know that, I guess you can have auto uses with certain restrictions, right? In B three, I mean, I don't know, can you have an auto use by right? I mean, you can't get a gas station by right in B three, or can you?
Well, for example, we have Coleman Motorsports use, for example, which maybe was previously in years past a grocery store. But you just look up and down that, that area and it's, it's.
Yeah, I get it. But those are, I mean, most of those are older uses that have been there for, in some cases, many decades. So I, I get that. And I'm all for, you know, if there's interest in a property that hasn't been interested in for years. I mean, this is sort of a different situation. It's got a unique ownership kind of structure. And, and so, I mean, I, I, I get all that. And I'm happy to, you know, we're always happy to see new investment in the, in the city. But when it's, you know, I think there's just been some significant and some valid concerns raised about this particular plan. I'm not saying the entire concept is, is, is not feasible here or doesn't comport with the plan. And, and I'm not saying I can't support this use here. But I'm just saying that I think that there's been enough significant issues raised about the design, about some of the other factors, the proffers. So, I mean, that, that's, that's where I'm at. But I appreciate your comments and they're, they're well taken.
All right. Who else has comments? Sounds like Mr. Krasner is a little bit wary of taking action. I'm, I am okay with the generally the proposed motion. I think we have a couple of tweaks to put in there, but where do other people stand?
And I should probably know the answer to this, I apologize. What gives me a little agenda is that we have the rezoning, which I don't really have a problem with, mixed in with the site plan. And is that something we, we've done? Is that something we routinely do? I think that's where I think we have some concerns with the, with the actual construction itself and the, what we're planning to do.
Well, I assume we could split this into two motions if we wanted to. I don't.
You can split into two motions. Now, we don't routinely do this. This, this has been a unique situation since the site plan was filed sometime in November of last year. And they've been sort of stuck in limbo trying to answer the questions of proffers and, and what to do with them. And then COVID, it's just been delayed. And so this was our idea of trying the best we can to put those two actions together. But no, it's, it's not routine.
And do, and again, forgive me for not knowing the answer. Do the proffers usually ride with the rezoning or with the site plan? They ride with the rezoning, right?
Right, it's with the rezoning. But the site plan would be subject to the proffers of the rezoning in this case.
Sure, sure.
And also to be clear, we are making recommendations about the proffers and rezoning. That's not actually our call. But it, but it is up to us to make a, a motion or make a decision on the site plan. That's right, right?
That's right, Mr. Rankin. So you would approve or deny or approve with conditions the site plan? But on the rezoning piece, you would make a recommendation to approve, deny or with conditions to the city council?
Can I have a question about the logic of that? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. If you're still going, Mr. Puentes, go ahead.
Please.
Okay. So when we first saw this site plan working session, we were working under the understanding that this is by right development, which, which, you know, I guess limits to a certain extent what we can do. But now this is a rezoning. And so the site plan approval is really contingent on the rezoning. So I, I guess I have questions about how we can approve a site plan without the rezoning having been now down first. And, and sort of strategically, I think we've raised a number of issues in terms of the proffers. And so it, so I guess, how can we approve a site plan not knowing what the rezoning will ultimately look like? And when we have some recommendations to change the rezoning proffers?
Well, I, I think first of all, we could not take action on the site plan. But I think the site plan would be contingent on the rezoning. Now, I guess you're saying, what if our opinion of the site plan is impacted by what the rezoning ends up, what the, what the proffers on the rezoning end up being? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, for example, if there was a proffer in the rezoning that said, yeah, I don't know what the technical language of this should be, but that, you know, any building built in this site should be pedestrian oriented with parking lots in the back. Yeah, that would affect the location of this building. And, and that to me is a question that in my mind is unresolved. Why this building can't be moved closer to the street?
Yeah, those were exactly my comments I was going to say before. So thank you.
Safety of the breath. Yeah, I, we could certainly, we could certainly, I mean, I guess that is a question for staff. If we, if we do this all in one motion and the site plan is, approval is contingent on some specific requests we have on the, on the proffers, I, I, I don't know. I guess then if those proffers don't get incorporated by city council, the site plan is then rejected or returned to us? That's a good question. I mean, the problem is, once the rezoning happens, I, I get obviously dictated by the proffers, you know, then becomes a by right thing. So if we wait for the rezoning to happen and they come back with by right requests, I assume we're limited in what we can do.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, the planning commission desires, you can wait until the rezoning action is taken by the city council to take action on the site plan. I think if applicant's open to that, we could, we could bring the site plan back.
Mr. Chairman, may I address that? Who's this again? I would appeal to the Planning Commission Act on both the site plan and the rezoning. I would point out that if this were in Fairfax County, this would be a proffered condition amendment. Apparently the city does not have that process in its arsenal. And so it has to technically be a rezoning. As Ms. Ruzzi has pointed out, this was, we applied for a site plan in November. This is now August. Basically, we're running out of time in terms of the winter to get under construction. If we can't get under construction sometime very soon, the project's going to go away because scramble can't wait. They've got their own issues to deal with. So I would appeal to the, to the planning commission to act on both the site plan and the rezoning tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. I, I'm personally inclined to act on both of them tonight as well as if we're, if we're able to, just because I don't, I, I don't personally feel like the rezoning proffers are going to change very much. And therefore, we should be able to make our decision on the site plan. But.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question? This is Jim Snyder.
Yeah, go ahead.
And this is somewhat a question for the applicant. My understanding, and I could be wrong about this, but that one of the reasons the building is set back was that there is going to be sharing of the parking in front of the building by the church on Sundays. And having convenient, visible parking adjacent to the church was important to them. And that was part of their reason for asking that the building be set back. Now, I may, I may have misunderstood that, but I would ask the applicant if that is, is that, if that is part of it. Because my understanding is there's going to be some sharing of parking on, on Sundays of that parking lot with the church and its activities.
That's correct, Mr. Snyder. Thank you.
All right. This would be a lot easier to do if we were all in person and I could look at your faces and gauge how you're feeling. But can't do that. So Ms. Teats, Mr. Wodisca, Mr. Stevens, people who haven't chimed in lately, thoughts on where we go from here?
Can I just respond just to that last point? Just the process, number seven of the process is shared parking. It says that visitors to and employees of the parking lot site shall be permitted to use the parking spaces, loading spaces. Right? Doesn't say anything about the church using it, anybody using it, anybody but the folks using.
Yeah, and I think we have to, we have to make, I, I think it's important to understand that, I don't think all of the plans that they intend to, you, you know, all the plans for the site need to are going to end up in the proffers. Just because like, I don't, the, the proffers are there to go along with this rezoning. So I mean, I, I, the applicant can respond to that. But, you know, because one of the things we have learned with these proffered rezonings is, depending on what those proffers are, it, it could hamstring us down the road. So we want the proffers to be beneficial. So I, I, I don't know about that particular issue. But, yeah, it doesn't seem like the shared parking with the church is proffered. But I do, I have read in several parts that that is part of the plan, that the business will be closed on Sunday mornings and things like that.
That, that is correct, Mr. Chair. The church is not mentioned, the church sharing the parking is not mentioned in the proffer. So I'll, I'll defer, that's been a statement made by the applicant. But so I'll defer to him on how that actually happens.
Yes, this is Bob Young. To address that issue, we have a written agreement with the church with respect to the parking. It's contained in the lease. It's long and complicated, but that's an important aspect from their point of view. Thank you.
Well, I'd say I personally did, I'm not that concerned about the church having enough parking. But it, it rises to, to the point here because of this issue with the site plan and the location of the building. If the location of the building is such because we want churchgoers to be able to see that there's available parking, it's just, it's just tough for me to, to, to go along with that. Especially when we don't really quite know why, why the location of the building is where it is. We have some ideas and some, some speculation here, but we don't have, have the whole thing. Which makes me difficult for me to approve the site plan at this point. Again, the rezoning I'm okay with, but not the, the site plan.
Mr. Chairman, I, I've made the statement a few times before. This is such an unusual situation in that we're leasehold owners of the property as opposed to the owners. And the owners of the property operate with a committee, multiple committees actually, with the concurrence of the Episcopal bishop in Richmond. And so all of these opinions, if you will, had to be taken into account over an extremely long, mini month negotiation with respect to building the building. So basically our hands are tied. We're the applicants, but we're actually co applicants with the church.
Right.
So.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I understand everyone's concern, but Mr. Young, I, I take it at your word that, that it's unrealistic to attempt to find out and change the church's mind on the location. I had, I've had very, very, you know, loose, long ago, kind of interaction with them. And it was challenging to get, get anyone who could speak for it. So, I, again, I'm not, I, I, I'm, I understand that challenge. So, but I, I also understand that other people are concerned about it. I, I personally think if our, if our goal is to wait until we find out from the church why they don't want the building closer to the street, we will find out there won't be a building at all. But we certainly could give that a shot if that's what we want to do. But I want to move this along. It's already nine fifteen. So. Mr. Stevens, yes, you unmuted. Speak please.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, can hear you.
Yeah. I don't see this as a, as a model project, but I understand the, kind of the restrictions that we're dealing with. Certainly in terms of the location, I think I'm also guided by the fact that South Gate one is, is already kind of guilty, so to speak, by not being up the way that we all would like it. So in a way, having this done correctly would still leave a block that's, it's kind of missing. Some, some important design capability. As far as doing both of them at the same time, when I listened to the city council review of this project a couple of weeks ago, I, I didn't sense any difficulties that they were having. So it would be my expectation that they would ultimately approve the zoning. So I think our risk there is not huge. So even though I've heard some, some good arguments from my colleagues here, I think I would be inclined to go ahead and approve the two items before us here with the addition of one whereas clause that deals with the addition of a rooftop solar system and the placement of underground conduit.
Okay. Look about Ms. Teats and Ms. Wodisca, how are you guys feeling on this?
I'm willing to move forward. Bad echo. I was writing down some of the issues that came up. I, I don't think we're going to move the building. And it seemed like clear from the staff that, that they feel like the stormwater is the best that we're going to get at this point. And I know we've talked about like, you know, we have proffers here, but this is such a small project economically. I just don't see how we're going to get any grand proffers out of it. You know, I was just there this weekend to walk around that site. And it's, it's an awful site now. It's very unattractive. There's a lot of trash. You know, it's just a big, flat piece of asphalt that probably runs all the water off onto their street in most cases anyway. So I, I think this will be attractive. It'll, it'll match the building next door. I'd like to see it redeveloped. I think we'd like to see that whole section redeveloped, like, like Mr. Snyder talked about. When we did the area plan for that, our grand vision would be for this whole section, the tower, you know, shopping center, the 7-Eleven, all things, all of it to be redone at some point. But I don't think we're at the right time. I think it will happen. And I think this is a good use for now. So I would move forward with it, with the conditions that Mr. Stevens said. I guess I had a question for staff. Do we need to, would we need to say something about this mid-block crossing move in? Or is that officially out of the plan already? I wasn't sure about that.
You still show the plan right now. And if you approved the plan as is, you would be agreeing with the applicant's proposed location.
Okay, so that would be three things that we'd have to say then. Move in the mid-block crossing to where DPW wants it to be, the underground conduit and the solar power. Okay. And, and I'm not sure what else that we really want to change here. I mean, I, like I said, I, I tried to write down some notes and I think there were different issues that came up, but nothing really concrete. So I guess if, if we want to hold it up, I'd like to hear like concrete. So I guess if, if we want to hold it up, I'd like to hear like concretely what we think we want to change. And if we think we can actually get it changed to actually hold it up.
All right.
Thanks for that.
Ross, you unmuted?
Yeah, no, I I want to agree with Mr. Stevens and Ms. Teets. While the points that have been raised tonight are excellent, and I tend to agree with them, I honestly have no issue with the rezoning based on the history here. The, the only thing I would not agree with is the attractiveness of this building. I do not like it. But in terms of, that, that's not a reason for me to, to, to not vote for it, but I'd like to see those those three additions to the motion occur. So I'm ready for to vote on both and to, as you said, sort of move this along.
All right, any party, on anyone before somebody maybe will make the motion? Or we could get a motion and then debate the motion? Melissa, you're really good at these motions where we make little adjustments, I'm just saying.
I, Mr. Stevens, what's your exact language on the solar power? I always thought you would do it because you had two of, three other things we have to change.
Well, here's what I I propose.
Melissa, can you unmute? Thanks.
Oh, sorry, thanks. Whereas the developer agrees to add to the proffers the addition of a rooftop solar energy system and the placement of conduit for future placement of two EV charge stations. That's what I had so far.
Well, I think you're good. Just add the mid-block crossing has to move in. You're ready to go.
Okay, and that would be, you want to help me with that, any placement?
Yeah, I think that would go under the, I further move and throw a whereas, because that's where the site plan is, and throw a whereas after that. I guess, I don't know, staff maybe can advise. Or not, I don't know. Basically.
I'm thinking. I, I think it would, I think it should probably go under the very last paragraph. I further moved the planning commission to approve the site plan, and then maybe add a condition that the the crossing be moved to closer to the site entrance per the DPW comment. That, that is what you were, you were discussing, right?
Yep, that's what we're talking about.
Okay, so in that case, I think that's where it should probably go.
Okay, should I go ahead and try this?
That'd be great. And we can, don't get too stressed. We can tinker it, but yeah, if you could take a shot, that'd be great.
Okay, whereas the requested conditional rezoning of the property and the proposed development are consistent with the comprehensive plan in the South Washington Street Core or Small Area Plan. And whereas the planning commission finds approval of the site plan and related waivers and modifications is consistent with the objectives of Division Seven Site Plans, check for 48-1137. And whereas the requested waivers under the site plan would not be substantially detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And whereas the developer agrees to add to the proffers the addition of a rooftop solar energy system and the placement of conduit for future placement of two EV charging stations. Now therefore, I move that the planning commission recommend approval of ordinance TR-20-17 to amend the official zoning district map of the city of Falls Church, Virginia by rezoning a total of approximately 1.7 acres of land to replace the existing conditional zoning and proffered development plan while maintaining the B3 general business zoning designation properties of 116 East Fairfax and 130 East Fairfax. And our further, further move, the planning commission approves site plan application number 2019-1117 with the addition of the movement of the proposed mid-block crossing consistent with the Department of Public Works engineer and the requested waivers. This approval is contingent on final approval of ordinance TR-20-17 for a proposed conditional rezoning of the subject properties by city council on August 10, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Do I have second?
I'll second. This is Ms. Teets.
All right, we have second for Ms. Teets. Any comments before we vote on this, or questions or suggestions? Mr. Brad?
Mr. Chairman, yeah. Like I said, I just, I don't think this is ready. I, you know, I've heard all the explanations from staff and from others about why we're sort of, this is like, we have to accept this. It's like the best it can be because of all these other reasons, but to me, it all rings kind of hollow. I don't know why. I don't know why on this site we have to say, well, my city is so small. I don't, I don't consider any parcel, you know, insignificant or, or something that we could say is, is not really, you know, a big deal. I mean, every, especially every non-residential site we have is so small. And from a design perspective, I don't ever think that there's, you know, an opportunity that's worth, you know, sort of throwing out because of whatever reason, you know, and that doesn't matter to me who owns it. It doesn't matter. That's great that the church owns it, but you know, if the church doesn't want to do things, well, I mean, that's okay. Well, then maybe then they don't get what they want as far as leasing it out. So I don't know, all that is to say, I'm not going to vote on this. I mean, I would, I'm tempted to just to vote no. I'm going to abstain. Because I don't think it's ready. I think it could get better, and that's really why I don't want to vote no, but I just don't think it's there yet. And sort of the rush to do it, I mean, again, it's not our fault that this took the circuitous route. None of that, you know, I don't think was because of the planning commission. As far as I know, we, we just, you know, we, we deal with the cards that were dealt. And so here we are. So for all those reasons, I think this could be better. I think it could be designed better. Every site counts, and I'm going to abstain.
All right, thanks. Any other comments or questions?
I mean, I guess I'll just, just add to that. You know, the planning staff provided a rubric for, for questions, got any questions to ask when thinking about rezoning. And you know, some of the questions are, you know, the same questions that we're supposed to ask for comprehensive plan amendments. So just does this, you know, how does this achieve the city's vision and core values? Is this, you know, consistent with a small area plan? And I just and it's, it's just not there to me. So, and when I think about the net benefit to the city, you know, we would lock in this large development for an additional $6,000 per year of tax revenue and 4% additional stormwater capture. And that's not nothing. I mean, that's, that's meaningful, but is it worth what we're giving up in terms of the vision that we have for how the city develops? And those are conversations I'd be willing to have, but procedurally, I just have a concern you know, with us being asked to recommend a rezoning without having had a work session to kind of talk through some of the implications and talk through this. So I don't know if I'm an abstainer or a no, but those are, I just, I still have concerns that are just, I think, not addressed by today's conversation.
Okay, thanks for those comments. Did anybody else? Mr. Pointez, anyone muted?
I just, I go with the, the previous two comments. And I'm also worried about then the precedent this sets for, you know, especially with the location of the building. That's just my, as I keep saying, that's my, my big concern here.
Okay. Anyone else have anything to say before we call a vote? All right, Ms. Bazemore, would you call a vote? We'll call a vote on this one, please. Yes.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Yes.
Yes.
This is Mr. Pointez.
No, no. Yes.
No.
All right. We're done with that one. Thank you, everyone. I have to go back to my agenda. All right, thanks to the applicant. I'm sorry we kept going so late, but I appreciate all the back and forth. I think we actually had a good discussion. I think everyone made some really good points. We are now on to the next item, which is the West Falls Church SESP/SEE amendment. We are here hopefully to make a recommendation to council. What what are we going to be sharing with us for now?
Good evening, council. This is Carly Aubrey with planning staff. I'll give a brief overview, brief staff presentation, kind of update on where we are, and then I'll turn it over to the development team in case they have any updates since we were at a work session with you all a couple of weeks ago. They have their presentation handy. If there's anything that wants to be pointed out, but they were not planning on doing a full fledged presentation again. So I'll just run through my presentation briefly. The planning commission has requested to hold a public hearing and provide comments and recommendations on the first submissions for two applications for the West Falls Church Economic Development Project. One is the application to amend the previously approved special exception entitlement, and the second is an application for a special exception site plan for Phase One of the project. The applications were referred out to boards and commissions at the July 13th city council meeting. And the current development proposal includes changes from the approved SCE, thereby requiring a SCE amendment. These changes are detailed on pages 13 to 14 of the staff report. And just very briefly, they include a proposed adjustment to the parcel boundary and the Phase One boundary to add some additional land. There's proposed modifications to proposed uses such as the civic space requirements, a reduction in size, and then a reconfiguration to the location and type of uses.
Ms. Teets, can you give more?
And then also in regards to uses, there's a request to add some commercial uses that aren't explicitly listed in the approved SCE. Some of these are considered a type of retail or accessory to permitted use. There are some uses such as the proposed daycare and pet service uses that would require a zoning code text amendment to allow for city council to consider such uses as part of the special exception since they are not listed as permitted uses currently in the B2 zoning district. And current special exception regulations only provide for consideration of increased height and residential uses. Another proposed change is some general building locations have shifted specifically to blocks B1 through B4, and then also for garage D2. And those changes are shown in attachment three of the staff report. Because of these building changes, there have been some changes through the street layout as well, primarily the Street A has been split, and it's now considered, or it's now shown as Streets B and C east of the Commons. Alley one, which was an open-air alley in Block A, is now enclosed, and there is now an open-air alley shown in Block D. And there is an addition of what's referred to as Lane Four between the High School Grove and the condo building in Block C. There is a slight change in the phasing due to the senior housing development partner. They are behind on their design, and so they will be lagging a few months behind this project. They are anticipated to come in with their own SESP with details on architecture and building design. And then there are some changes, proposed changes to the voluntary concessions for the SCE. And those have to deal with the uses that I described previously. And then also a request to remove the requirement that the owner not receive permits for the last 100,000 square feet of residential until above-ground construction has started on either office and hotel. So the staff report includes a summary of the July 15th planning commission work session. And in addition to the work session, the applications have been discussed by city boards, commissions, and community organizations with the exception of the Recreation of Parks Advisory Board, who are, they're scheduled to discuss at their September 2nd meeting. This afternoon, comments, our planning commission received comments that have been received to date from the boards and commissions. It should be noted that the comments in the table that are from the Architectural Advisory Board, the CACT, Housing Commission, Human Services Advisory Council, and the School Board, they're from staff notes. We're still waiting on official comments from those groups. So those comments in general have covered topics such as architecture, urban design, place making, transportation, the proposed uses, affordable housing, environment, parks and open space, and fiscal impact. And some of the common themes included an appreciation for the modern style of architecture, further consideration of more ways to alleviate the perceived massing of Block A, the continued coordination with appropriate groups entwining in the history of Falls Church to project elements such as murals, sculptures, interpretive signage, and other place making elements, support for a signalized intersection at Route 7, Commons Drive, and Chestnut Street, the importance of making sure that the accessible route from Haycock Road to the Commons is not perceived as a secondary route, the importance of designing materials to ensure pedestrian safety, particularly for students, the importance on a mix of uses and uses that will contribute to the vibrancy of the site and economic stability of the city, continue to work with the city to provide affordable housing that best meets the needs of the city, the inclusion of a small portion of civic space for local art exhibitions, interpretive panels, and public information area, more details on pre-canopy coverage, tree and plant selections, and landscaped open space, the incorporation of dark sky lighting recommendations, and the incorporation of more open space play areas for children and resident pet relief areas. In terms of the comprehensive plan analysis and special exception analysis, the project generally meets all those the goals in the criteria for those two items. The staff report does discuss some additional comprehensive plan goals that could be accomplished with some more detail. The site plan analysis, staff comments are incorporate, are in the report, and key comments are highlighted. Staff analysis will continue for subsequent submissions. In terms of scheduling, there is a slight change. The city council workshop session has been rescheduled from August 10th to September 8th, and the primary purpose will be to discuss these board and commission comments. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the proposed motion, which includes specific recommendations based on the planning commission's work session on July 15th. The staff welcomes additional and modified recommendations from the planning commission as part of your recommendation to council. And with that, I can take questions, and then we can turn it over to the development team.
All right. Thank you. And just so we're all clear on this, unlike a normal specialist exception, we are in the position of just giving a recommendation to the city council. Now, I, I think they will take our recommendation seriously, but and consider them. But this is different, right? We're just giving a recommendation.
Correct. Yeah, this is for it was two actions. So there's the special exception entitlement, which kind of functions as a, I guess, a normal SCE, in that you would give a recommendation to council. The second being the special exception site plan, while it's being reviewed against both the requirements for special exception and site plans, it is the council that has the action over the site plan.
Right.
With your recommendation.
Yes, exactly. All right. Well, and you said the applicant is happy to answer questions, but isn't planning to present, right?
I ask them to have their presentation handy in case there were questions, but.
Yeah, that's correct. The Zed and Goldman were, were, you know, we, we did a pretty detailed presentation last time, so we didn't want to take more time from the planning commission tonight, but happy to answer questions.
Yeah, I suspect we might jump around when questions come up, but I'm going to run through questions. I'm going to reverse the order, so I'm going to start with you, Mr. Stevens. Any questions about all this?
Question is for Ms. Aubrey. I was reading through the 11-page letter that we received from Fairfax County, very detailed. And I'm just wondering if there's anything in there that you consider, or the city considers to be a showstopper. I found a lot of helpful comments in there myself. Although I was a little discouraged to still see some confusion over the the 30%, 70% split and whether or not we had met that. It's discouraging at this late stage to still see questions coming from at least those members of Fairfax County who participated in that letter, not being clear on this. So I'd appreciate any feedback you have on that.
Yeah, so we're continuing to look at that. And I think, I think there might just be confusion on what they were looking at in terms of the acreage.
The question I saw, they seem to be asking, they seem to be suggesting that an earlier plan had one percentage, and then this plan, which clearly uses more of the school space, has a lower percentage. I think they're asking how the math changed.
Yeah, so, and I think that's, so the original, like rezoning and the comprehensive plan analysis does refer to the full 30%, which is around 10.38 acres. The approved SCE from last year is about 9.45 acres. Their request now is to go up to about 9.77. That all is still under the 10.38 acres and under 30%.
That all makes good sense to me, but I think it's what's in their letter and what's in their minds that counts. So if there's any issue where we want to be absolutely clear on and have agreement with, obviously, I'm not saying anything that isn't already apparent, but why, I would sure encourage going the extra mile to make sure everybody is very comfortable with those very important percentages. Beyond that, I mean, I have some other suggestions and comments, but I can, I can come back to those later, Mr. Chair, if you want to go with questions first.
Sure, let's just run through questions first. Mr. Wodisca, do you have any questions?
No, I, I really don't. The, the staff report did a excellent job, it's like six or seven pages of detailing the questions that we had last time. I mean, we, we just dealt with this. So no, the, the quick answer is no.
All right. Okay. Ask, ask some questions. Those, those must, I could echo at you.
Sorry, was that to, to me?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. One, when are we likely to see the SESP voluntary concessions? Because my understanding is what was in the packet was the SCE voluntary concession. So will that come back to Planning Commission, the SESP voluntary concessions? Two, you know, the Fairfax, what is very interesting, you know, and they're, particularly the acknowledgement that this site benefits their stormwater requirements. So maybe this is a little bit off of, from left field, but, you know, is this, has there been any engagement with Fairfax County to see if they're willing to fund any additional stormwater improvements, recognizing that they would benefit from that as well? And then I guess my last question goes back to my comment from our last conversation. There is a volunteer, there's a piece of language in the SCE voluntary concession that states that the applicant can amend the amenities in the commons. And that still seems, I know we discussed it, and the answer was it's, it's plantings or vegetation, but that strikes me as very broad. So I would like to understand what the, what is, you know, when they say amenities in the commons, does that, what, how is that defined? And then what would be the administrative process to amend amenities?
So I'll, I'll start with the VCE questions. We do anticipate a submission, and the second submission is set for the SESP. And we have talked about starting the conversations pretty soon on what those will include. And then along with that, we would talk about the SCE voluntary concessions, and one of those would be that last item you brought up. So that's, it's pending, but we do anticipate more answers, at least on the SESP VCs, VCs, too many acronyms with the second submission. But, but for the question about the amenities, I don't know if Evan has an update on that. I'll defer to him.
Yeah, so I, I don't think I 100% understood the question. So you, you were asking, I think we had wanted the ability to modify amenities over time as a kind of an administrative level, so we'd have a place making and amenity plan that you guys would all approve, and then that would give general direction, and then the specific direction would come later. Is, are you asking the process to approve those final elements and changes later? Oh, hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, I heard you.
Okay.
Sorry, I was muted.
Okay.
That's good. Now, my quest, so in the voluntary concession language says amend the amenities in the commons via an administratively approved addendum to the SESP.
Okay, got it.
Yes, my question is, what is that process to administratively approve an addendum?
So let's do, so two things. Number one, and Carl, we probably should maybe turn a little bit of attention to the place making amenity plan, because it's always been a companion document, but now that we're getting closer to SESP approval, we probably should have a meeting where we review it with staff and go through it in detail. And then at the final approval, the council and the Planning Commission are probably going to want to weigh on it as well. So the thought, and this was just a recommendation based upon how we did it in Montgomery County, we can obviously do it differently here if desired, but what we did in Montgomery County is we got the overall place making amenity plan approved. And that plan said, for example, you'll have whatever, you know, X flowerpots, you'll have X benches, you'll have Y pieces of art, you'll have whatever it was, was, we proffered a whole bunch of quantities that would all have a look and feel per the booklet. And then we agreed to do a quarterly meeting with staff, and of course, the county got to select who was in staff. In that, their case, they had their arts committee members and some members from the landscape department. So there were, you know, probably 10 people from the county that we met with on a quarterly basis. And as we started selecting items, we would review those, especially the art pieces and the benches, with staff. And they would give us approval. I think it actually was, it may have even been verbal approval in the room based upon what we were submitting. We did that for a series of quarters, and then after about four quarters, we disbanded the group once they were happy with the direction that we were going with the site amenities. They felt like we were overachieving, and they didn't need to meet with us anymore. And so that, so we ended up ultimately implementing the site, the changes on the site. Obviously, to the extent, the goal is that once we've met that threshold and the city feels like we've achieved, is not to have it be some bureaucratic process where we're regularly going back and taking up staff time and going through ultimate reviews. It's really just to make sure that staff feels like they're delivering a quality of product, project, that's what we promised the community, and we're not doing something that everyone's going to be shocked and think is, you know, is not appropriate.
That, that sounds like a reasonable process, I guess, is there a way we could sort of expand on what that means in the voluntary concessions? And I would leave that to staff to figure out. I guess the, the related question, which I probably should have asked first, was I wasn't able to locate the draft amenity plan? Maybe I wasn't looking in the right places. Does that exist? Was that in one of these attachments?
It is, let me.
Yeah, and if, and if, if not, we can certainly share it again if, if it didn't make it to you.
I found one way at the, the back of Attachment 3, but that looked like from a prior discussion, so I wasn't sure if that was the.
Let's, yeah, it's in Attachment 1B, the SESP supporting documents.
Right, so it had like the food truck rally, is that, or, so that's still, okay. So I would like an administrative process to determine whether or not we should have food truck rallies. Thank you.
That's fine.
All right, did you have any other questions right now, Ms. Miles?
No, that's it, thank you.
All right, Mr. Portes, what about you?
No, this is great.
All right, Ms. Teetz, any questions?
Yeah, I have a few. It's funny, I didn't think I was going to have any till I read the packet and read all the comments, and some things did jump out on me. One, there was a very long memo sent to us about how some of the way the glass is put in will affect birds, and I'm not sure how much you can mediate that issue, but I thought that was a very interesting memo and an interesting thing for the architecture group to look at, just like making sure that the way we place the windows and glass doesn't lead to a lot of birds, I guess, suicidal jump on the glass or something. The other thing in the comments I thought was, there was a lot of people that were concerned about the recreational issue, you know, that's one of my big concerns is lack of open space. There was some thought to using the roofs for recreation. I don't know, I know that some different things are going to happen on the roofs, but that was one of the things, I wondered if there could even be like a soccer field on a roof, because we have some fairly large buildings here. So that's something, it would be interesting to have, and that would create more recreational space. There's concerns about pet needs. I don't know if any of the buildings will have pets, I don't know if the apartment building will allow for it, but I imagine the condo buildings would. So, you know, real concern that there be, you know, we have a, we have a stormwater cleanliness issue here, like we're, you know, like all localities, we are responsible for what four-mile run and trips run carries out of our city. And so a big pollutant is dog feces, and the four-mile run is like one of the number ones things. So just making sure that if we do have buildings with pets, that we do have facilities for the pet, you know, bags or signs or something. So that kind of came out of that. I thought the EDA had a really interesting comment about their concerns for pedestrian safety, that between all the developments, they're concerned it's going to be very difficult for students to cross over to George Mason University, um, George Mason High School and, and MEH, that, you know, they're just saying like, especially when all three developments happen. So when ours is done and, and the Womata site and the Virginia Tech site. So I guess, you know, we do have transportation grant money for that area, so I guess it's, I think they made, they made a really good point that it might be very difficult for students to cross there with the amount of activity. Now, I think that some of that's going to be ameliorated by that grant money, but that's just something, you know, to keep in mind, and, and I'm sure that's, I'm sure that the schools will also keep that in mind as this goes along, that their students have to be able to get there safely. And then the, several groups are still concerned about Block Building A. And I know you've tried to break it up, but there's a lot of feeling that it still needs to be, have some breaking up, and that some of the buildings facing the giant parking lot don't, still aren't as differentiated as it should be, like, so just something as architecture goes, that that seemed to come out a lot. So those are like some of the comments, those are some of the big things that came out to me, came out to me. So the recreational, the pets, breaking up Building A more, the bird issue, and still like trying to find other recreational space. The thing that I personally am concerned about now that I really wasn't as concerned about before, is when I was reading through the staff report, it really hit me, and we didn't really talk about this in the last updates, the civic space requirements. I guess I, I'm just, you know, I guess at this point, I, my big question, I, we're not trying to have a music entertainment venue, it seems, as we were looking at before, where it was going to be like some kind of indoor stage kind of deal or something like that. So now what we're saying is, it's the civic space is an indoor conference room. So like if there is an indoor conference room in an office building, that civic space, like what are the procedures for people to be able to use that, to get into a building? Most of the time when we need that kind of space, we need it at night, and I'm not sure how that works. I, I just thought it was odd that we're now saying that 4,000 square feet of the Commons is outdoor event space, and that's part of the civic space requirements, because that event space existed in the Commons the entire time. And so it was, and that space was never considered to be part of that civic space requirement. So if you ask me, it really means that the amendment is really more like in the 14,000 area, because I don't think you can count that 4,000 square feet of that, of the Commons, because it existed before this, it's not part of it. And I guess like this education art space, that's what you guys have been calling the music school. So can you just talk to me a little bit about this civic space requirement and how it's changed, and what, what realistically is going to happen here for, for the public to use this space?
Yeah, good question. So I have to address actually all the questions. And then we can share, we do have a, an exhibit in the SESP submission that deals with pet relief, pet relief areas, so we can share that tonight as well, or if you, if you get a chance, you can look at that in the SESP. So the birds, we read the birds comment, too. You know, that typically happens in buildings that are all glass or largely glass on an entire facade. And there are things you can do with the color of glass you select that can deal with that. Obviously, the birds are important. At the same time, we need people to have marketable residential units and office buildings that people can see in and out of, and, and that will, you know, that people actually want to be in. But the good news is in our, in the case of our buildings, you know, we don't have one super tall building that's, you know, 50 stories tall, and we don't have any buildings really that are 100% glass, which is where you often see the biggest bird strike issues. But we understand that concern. Most of our buildings, quite frankly, are broken up with window mullions or brick columns in between the windows that really helps the birds understand that that's a window and not open sky, which is when the biggest issues happen. And even our office building and condo buildings have frames around the window areas, which help the birds understand that, you know, this is not sky. Recreation, I know that's always been a concern, and that's one that's a shame, it's not one we're ever going to be able to address, because obviously, the challenge here is we really need to create the economic value for the city, so we don't have the ability to have, you know, a one-acre, two-acre park on the ground level, which would be great, but isn't maybe the right site for that. The buildings themselves, most of the buildings are wood frame, which, which precludes you from doing any active space on the roofs. You can, you can do green roof, which we are, but you can't have them be accessible. The condo buildings, all the buildings do have accessible, all the residential buildings have accessible open space at the second floor, at the podium level, above the retail, so that the residents have amenity spaces and outdoor spaces, which is even more important in COVID. The condo has, has that as well. So there will be active open spaces for the residents, both in the buildings as well as out on the rooftops, which is great. They just won't be at the very high roof. The pet safety comment from the EDA, I'll admit, I haven't seen that comment, and I'm, we had a very positive meeting with EDA, and that didn't come up in the meeting, so I'm not sure what that comment's referring to. But the schools have been intimately involved in the design of our site and are very happy with the accessibility and the way kids are going to get to and from school. So I'm not sure what that comment's about. But the, for the sake of this committee, what's important is we have asked for two full-movement traffic lights on Haycock, one at Mustang Alley, and one at the grocery entrance and the muse connection to Federal Realty's property. Fairfax County has asked us to get rid of one of those. So the big issue that the city should be focused on is making sure that we are lobbying in the interest of the city and not lobbying in the interest of the county, and that if we want those two traffic lights, which are really critical for students crossing Haycock, we need to really make sure that that happens. We are fully supportive of it and pushing for it, but that was just an interesting comment in the Fairfax County letter. The reason both are important, the middle block one is the access to the grocery store, so we will lose our grocery lease if we do not have the access into their parking lot. And secondly, that's really one of the critical crossing points for students coming from Federal Realty over to the pedestrian muse and then over to the school. So that's really critical for us and the schools. The Mustang Alley one was going to be a hawk signal, and we changed that to a full signal because there will be other students crossing there as well, and we want to make sure it's safe. So that's really our logic behind them, and we can time the lights to make sure it works. And our traffic engineer has done the work to show that it does work. So, but I, I, yeah, I don't think there will be pedestrian issues getting to school for students. If anything, when you create a great immersive environment with really good protected sidewalks and tree pits, and it improves pedestrian accessibility, so that, that really shouldn't be an issue. Block A, we've heard from everybody, so there will be some architectural changes in our next submission, probably in September, October, probably October, where we've broken up the architecture even a little bit more, and we have some ideas that we're working through on that. We want to get all the comments from people before we made any changes to that. But you'll see some changes, especially to the red brick building, which is kind of the primary building at the corner of Haycock and 7, which is where we've gotten most of those comments about. So appreciate that. Okay, and then the civic space. So the civic space original requirement was 16,000 square feet of indoor space and 4,000 square feet of outdoor terrace on the rooftop deck. What has happened in the last six months or so, and has of course been accelerated by COVID, we did lose the music venue that we were hoping to bring to the site. And so our original civic package included a music venue space that would also then be a conference center or meeting space for the city. When we lost that deal back in February, and we did communicate that with staff, we retooled and came up with a new civic concept, which is still 16,000 square feet of indoor space. But we added a, instead of, we, we no longer have that civic space on the second floor, we've actually now moved the event space to the first floor, which makes it more accessible and answers your other question, which is if you have a big event or a party on an evening or weekend, you can literally walk into that space without having to go through the office lobby, without even being part of the office. So it has its own complete separate entrance to that facility, almost like a retail space. And the thought there is it, it's an event space, so if you want to have a wedding, a party. So if you want to have a wedding, a party, uh, you know, if want to have whatever it is, you would rent the space and have a party in that space. Um, it also will of course work, it's in the office building, so that the office tenants can also use it as a conference facility during the day. Uh, but evenings and weekends will be available for parties and events. Um, for the outdoor component, since it's on the ground, since it's on the ground floor, um, we'd originally thought about the commons as kind of always open to the public, which it is. And then the thought was to the extent we want to have um from time to time in coordination with the city, some, you know, great event, we'd have the ability, whether you're tenting the commons or having a party out on the lawn, you can start having some of that outdoor activity on a regular basis, even outdoor concerts. Um, so that we're still living up to the concept of having the arts be very immersed in the community and having music be a real big part of the site, even if we don't have our own music venue. So that's why we've, we're kind of taking what was the upstairs outdoor terrace and putting it in the middle of the commons. Um, quite frankly, just because that space is no longer on the second floor, so we just don't have an outdoor terrace to have it, um, have it on. Um, and then on dog, doggy, pet care. Um, why don't we, um, I don't know that we need to share the slide, it may be just worth looking at the S C S P package. But at, we've, we've provided four or five locations throughout the sites where we'll have pet stations, where people can, you typically near the exits from loading docks or exits from the residential entrances. So that if you're a resident in the building, you can quickly get outside and have a place to take your dog for relief. That's not in all the beautiful flower beds that we're creating. Um, and so we've strategically located them away from the retail core, so you're not having the kind of pet smells if you're a visitor to the site. But if you're a resident, you'll know exactly where to go. Uh, we, we have dog wash um stations in, certainly in the apartment building, I can't remember if we have one in the condo. Um, and we will have dog amenity, we'll think, we're thinking through kind of the dog amenities within the buildings as well. And whether we have some outdoor release spaces on rooftop decks within the building too. Uh, but we do know, as you said, we will have a lot of dogs here. Um, there is, this is not here, but you know, we're kind of thinking of this bigger plan, the 40 acres, including the Womata and Virginia Tech site. We are proposing an actual dog park on the Womata site. So that is, you know, within walking distance of the site. In the county, not the city, uh, there would be a facility for people to take their dogs for larger recreation.
Thanks. Could that cover your questions, Allison? I mean, we said yes, because she's unmuted. Um.
Oh, sorry, finally I'm muted, it was stuck. Yeah, I'm good, um, that, that helps a lot. And um, I like the look at the pet stations, I think I must have missed that. But anyway, like it's that I was joining through all the comments we finally received and that was just one that came up a couple times, so.
Yeah, yeah, we heard about it.
Yeah, I'm glad to understand the civic space before, I didn't ask about it last time. I don't think I really understood how much it had changed, because I was more focused on architecture and parking at that point, so thank you.
All right, Mr. Kastner, what questions do you have?
Well, uh, given, a lot of my questions, honestly, I was not here at the work session. I did read through, um, you know, the, the good summary of the questions and, and a lot of the questions I might have had, you know, I think were, were addressed. And even today, you know, I, so I don't want to belabor some of what was said. I mean, I think the changes overall here are, I mean, some of them are understandable. Um, and I think, you know, by and large, um, you know, by and large, any concerns I might have had, I think were, were adequately addressed. And I don't want to, um, you know, extend, extend the conversation just uh for that reason. So I will, I will not add anything else at this point, I think I'm okay.
All right, thank you. I think that covers everybody except me. So I just had a couple of quick comments and questions. One, uh, yeah, I was, I was a little bit um interested in the birds. It sounds like you guys understand how birds work, so hopefully the birds will be okay. Um, you know, I saw that idea of putting clay spaces or something on the roofs, I understand the challenge there. However, I assume you're, maybe I'm wrong, but I assume your uh above ground parking is not wood. I assume that's some sort of concrete, so, and I'm sure you're planning to use that all for parking, which is fine. But is there, if there's any sort of clever way to build those so that if a few years down the road, we don't need as much parking, then we could turn the roofs of those things into something interesting, that would be eager, like win an award or something for.
Yeah, so the, so the, the, I'll answer that really quickly. The con, the concrete decks are very strong, poured in place precast decks that can support, you know, hundreds of cars. So to the extent, as you said, you know, how many years down the line, we have a, you know, over, you know, we're overparked by a hundred spaces or something, it's not difficult to turn the top level of that into something else. It's, it's harder to create conditioned space, but if you are trying to do open space up there or park space or play space, that's, that type of stuff is doable. It is some, the, you know, the aisles are sloped, so you would, you know, you have that as a little bit of a challenge, but they're sloped at a handicap accessible rate, so you can make that work.
All right, and then um I had some questions and I wasn't sure when, I don't know if I didn't notice this last time, but the removing, removal requirement that I don't receive permits for the last 100,000 feet before other things. What, what are the odds that half of the site gets built and it's years later till we have office space and therefore some of the civic space and some of these cool other things? So I, I'm, maybe I'm just not right.
So the intent of that change was not what it probably comes across as. So in the old plan, if you might recall, we had two different apartment buildings. And so when we had two apartment buildings, we agreed with the city that the second apartment building wouldn't start until, wouldn't deliver until the office and hotel had started construction. Um, I think it would, it wouldn't start till those, those started construction. In the new phasing, since the apartment building is the longest construction, it's the biggest building, will take the longest to build. And it's now all combined, we're now building all of that initially. The office and hotels are very short buildings with no parking below them, so their construction timing will be a lot shorter. So we really just need the ability, uh, so just so you all know, we are, as a developer, guaranteeing completion of all of phase one. So it will have to be completed. We just need flexibility on the timing of construction start and delivery of those buildings within that phase. Uh, because the apartment building will now all be starting first, it's the longest building to build.
Okay, cool.
And we'll clarify that with staff, we'll work on language that puts some barriers around that.
Yeah, and I assume city council will be all over that as well, so. Uh, and then my final question was just whether or not, you know, I also read the nice letter from Fairfax County. I was thinking maybe we could get them to review all of our projects, but um. Any, yeah, and we'll throw, can you throw three acres of parkland in there? I think that was one of their suggestions, but uh, any update on the Chestnut Street side of things and?
Uh, yeah, so the, the design of the Chestnut Street intersection is progressing. Um, we've had a series of meetings with, um, or conversations with V dot, meetings with Fairfax County on V dot, uh, meetings with the property owner across the street. And of course, we're always keeping the city, um, you know, Wyatt and Carly and Paul and Jim involved as well. Uh, it looks like uh things are heading in a positive direction. There's kind of general agreement that this could work. Uh, so we are submitting our traffic impact study and uh S J R signal justification report to V dot in the next 10 days. Um, probably in the next week, actually. And then that will start the process, it'll be about a 35 to 90 day review from V dot. So our hope is by the end of this year, we will have kind of full agreement on what that intersection is and the approval and rights to build it. Um, if, obviously if we get negative um pushback along the way, the city will be with us in all those meetings, um, and we'll push back together.
All right, well, it's good to hear that, hopefully it's going in the right direction.
Yeah.
That's all I had, although I realize now, I think Mr. Stevens already planned to say, hey, I'll ask my questions and leave my comments and then we've all given our comments to. Back to you, Mr. Stevens, for your comments.
Uh, yeah, actually, I, I did have a, um.
Any questions, whatever you want.
Yeah, uh, um, one of the comments in the Fairfax letter dealt with the uh bike trail not connecting through to the metro station. Is that just a technicality?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what that's about. So that, what we've proposed for the Virginia Tech and Womata site continues the bike lanes um through um to the metro. And then they, it basically almost to the metro and then you have a shared use path that gets you to the metro, so I'm not sure what that's coming from.
I mean, it would make sense to end it at Mustang Alley.
No, 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 I, I'm not sure what that's about. It may just be that they hadn't seen, they're looking at this in isolation without the comp plan amendment that we're going through on Virginia Tech and Womata. And so without seeing.
Some of the diagrams just show it ending there, but you know, I assumed that was just at that stage in time and you didn't know what was going, going on quite yet at the Virginia Tech site, but now we kind of have a better idea, so.
That's right.
Uh, and then for um, Ms. Aubrey, is the unit mix of the condo building figured into the city financial impact model? And specifically, I'm, I'm looking at the 23 veteran units that uh are being identified there.
So it, we do look at the number of condos and the unit mix and for con, in our fiscal impact model. We are um working through that with the applicant, I think they've hired their own financial consultant. And then we're also looking at um how we use our people generation rates for those units, since they will be smaller than your typical um condos that we have in the city currently. So those, those are the factors that go into our model, um, amongst others. But so we're looking at that to make sure that we um have it accurately reflected, but that is in progress.
So it's possible, I think it was at 72 students were estimated uh in the project that can, you know, when it's all built out, that that could change.
Correct.
Yeah, uh, okay, uh, the other, couple of other just uh smaller comments. Uh, Fairfax County announced uh over at the mosaic, the startup of a uh autonomous vehicle shuttle pilot.
That's a fixed timing, right? Like who's going to ride on that right now?
Yeah, well, okay, but uh, you know, down the road though, I think uh something like that for the loop, on a continuous loop through the uh commons area all the way to the metro station, uh, really is just a very interesting thought. Uh, I, I really appreciate the developer considering uh some way to build in a compost pickup service for the residential buildings. I think that could be a very valuable uh add on. Um, uh, in terms of the uh financing issues, which has got to be a big challenge these days, I'd still ask that you keep in your back pocket the possibility of using the property says clean energy tool uh as a way to bring down the cost of the environmental components of the project and improve the capital stack. So I'll leave it at that.
Great.
All right, thanks, Mr. Stevens. Uh, anyone else have any uh questions or comments come to mind since you had your first crack at it? Otherwise, I think uh we're looking for a motion on this tonight, right?
I'm, I'm happy to make a motion if, if we are making one this evening.
I would clarify, my motion doesn't have a recommendation, approval, or anything, it's just my like comments on our work session. But I don't know, it's only the commission.
Carly, take the big one, I love that.
I think when Russ muted.
I, I, I'm unmute, I'm unmuted, but I was then going to let people have discussion about Carly's comments, I mean.
Yeah, I'm just saying, we're not muted.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's just your text out of whatever it is. Uh, right, so Ms. Aubrey was pointing out that this is just us, the motion as drafted is the, is six items that had come up previously, but doesn't actually specifically say if we're giving it a thumbs up or a thumbs down, is that right?
Correct.
And do you suggest we include that in the motion?
If you would like to, that'd be great. I, it was mentioned at the last meeting about maybe not, this is the first submission, maybe not being ready to make a thumbs up or thumbs down. But um, if you guys are ready now, I mean, that's fine, that's perfectly fine.
Uh, do, do, do you have a, I mean, I think, I think we're all sort of like, I mean, sure, what we see now is good and all the things we're hearing about the adjustments that are to come, you know, I don't think, well, I haven't heard anyone identify an issue that hasn't had a fairly satisfying response, but, but some of those responses are still pending. So if city council is hoping to get a specific thumbs up or thumbs down, I think we would be willing to do that, but it doesn't really matter. There are some issues that haven't totally been nailed down yet.
Yeah, so the next council meeting is going to be a work session primarily to talk about board and commission comments, so.
Yeah, I mean, I would be comfortable with the motion and including essentially a general approval of the, of the process as it's been going. I mean, that's my take on it, like it seems to be going, everything I heard looks good and the tweaks that we've talked about that are in the works sound like they're going to be what we want them to be. But if other people are, aren't as comfortable with that, uh, that's fine as well.
This is Mr. Peters, I'm comfortable with that.
Me too.
All right, Russ, do you have enough to go on to make a motion?
So all we're, we're trying to, are we trying to then add a piece that says we are approving it? Is that, that's what I'm interpreting, that's what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Or, or we are, because we already in this motion say we're going to recommend that they consider this. And then we would add another piece that says, I therefore, you know, move that we approve the, which part, the S?
That you enjoy the written approval on that to applications with those comments and considerations.
Um, I, I.
Russ, you have it?
All right.
Sorry, I had a question about that. I guess I wouldn't, I would rather see the S C S P voluntary concessions before saying that.
Okay. How, what do people feel about that? I, I mostly just, I, I, I'm, I'm fairly flexible, I just don't want to slow things down because um because, because I, I, for me anyway, I find it hard to imagine a situation where those um voluntary concessions come back as not being in line with what we've heard. But, uh, but if you wouldn't slow things down, I mean, the next council meeting is a work session, so they're not going to take any action, they're just going to hear what we say. So if our motion has these six items or however many items we want to add on to that, um, and it, and it doesn't give an official thumbs up or thumbs down, I think all that means is that we will be waiting again, um, you know, meeting not too distant future, which is fine with me.
I'm okay with moving forward tonight and I think we just need to, I mean, it says that we recommend that this, the following comments. And I just, I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong with that language.
So as written, sort of in approval, it doesn't seem, it doesn't say like, we approve.
No, I mean, all we can do is recommend, so.
That's right.
And I'm not sure that we're going to add anything to our recommendation in the future. I think it seems like we're generally good with what's going on, so. Um, I mean, does anyone have any specific things they want to add? Because we can add more things, it doesn't have to just be the six.
I, I would, I would suggest adding, uh, first of all, I, I want to communicate that I'm very positively inclined towards this, I don't have any concerns. But so maybe there's something about, you know, the planning commission, you know, now therefore I move that the planning commission positively views the application and recommends that the city council consider the following blah, blah, blah. If, if we want to just note that we're, we're generally supportive, that would be fine.
And I also think we could add an item that suggests that we would, you know, we haven't seen and we'd like to see the voluntary concessions on the, on the final piece. Like we could also just mention that, so they don't think that we've somehow rubber stamped something we haven't actually seen.
Yeah, yeah, I would like that. And I would also like to add um just an additional item, um, that just says, um, you know, please describe in more detail the administrative process for approving changes to the um amenities in the commons.
Ms. Weiss, do you feel up for making a motion where you insert those two things?
I would be happy to, awkwardly worded though it might be.
That's fine, that's how we roll, awkwardly worded.
So I, I would say that I'm adding something that we're, you know.
I think you could add an, I, you could add a little bit like uh commentary in the now therefore I move, you know, that we're generally in favor of the process. And then a seven and eight maybe about the, the process and then a point about, hey, we also haven't seen the final.
Yeah, okay, that, that sounds good. Uh, did anybody else have any other additions? I guess they would come in the form of a friendly amendment, so um, so then I should move. So, so then I should move. Do I need to read the whole thing then? So I thought I...
Yeah, do the proposed motion, just start with that.
Okay, I move that the planning commission approves the proposed motion, whereas applications for a special... Sorry, I'm looking at the shared screen, and I'm going to move over to my actual desktop, because the shared screen is just a little too hard for me. But, okay, so to start over again, I move that the planning commission approves the proposed motion, whereas applications for a special exception entitlement amendment and a special exception site plan to allow a mixed-use development project up to a maximum height of 15 stories has been submitted by Falls Church Gateway Partners, the applicant, pursuant to Sections 48-486C and 48-488B3, and in conformance with the procedures set forth in Section 48-488B of the city code. And whereas the two-step process outlined in Section 48-488B for special exception entitlement and special exception site plan allows for further refinement of specific project elements during the special exception site plan review. And whereas the planning commission has reviewed the first submissions of the SEE Amendment and the SESP applications and have comments and recommendations. And now therefore I move that the planning commission is generally in favor of the current application and recommends that, A, the city council consider the following comments, and B, the listed items be incorporated into the second submission of the SEE Amendment and SESP, in addition to items already required by code. One, the planning commission supports a signalized intersection at Route 7, Commons Drive, Chestnut Street. And two, provide an updated traffic impact analysis and signal justification reports. And three, provide details for a parking management plan as outlined in the transportation demand management plan. And four, ensure that the design along Streets B and C between Hancock Road and the Commons feels accessible to everyone, and there is not a different experience for those that use the elevator. And five, provide more details on affordable housing units, including but not limited to percentage, composition, and AMI. And six, incorporate equity and inclusion principles into the place-making guiding principles. And seven, provide the SESP voluntary concessions as soon as they are available. And eight, define the process, the administrative process for approving changes to amenities in the Commons as noted in the SEE voluntary concession draft.
Thank you for that. I'll second it.
I'll second it for Wadiska. All right, we have a motion for Ms. Weiss, a second for Mr. Wadiska. Do we have comments, questions about the motion?
Nice motion.
Well done. All right, if we've got nothing further, I would take a roll call vote. Please. Yes.
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 All right, we passed that one.
Thanks, everybody. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great. Have a great night.
Thanks. Good night. And we are getting late here, so I'm going to try to blaze through these couple of things if possible. We've got the July 15 minutes, which looked outstanding to me. Does anyone have any edit before we move those over to being accepted?
I move we approve the minutes, July 15.
Second. I'll, I'll second that.
Are we going to move?
Mr. Wadiska.
Second, second.
Mr. Wadiska. Roll call vote quickly unless someone has a comment. Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Dana, I wasn't here.
Miss Teef?
Yes.
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 All right, got that done. Information items at 8:45 PM. Off the mark a little bit there. Do we have any important planning commission reports that can't wait until our next meeting? I know there was an EDC meeting. I'm pretty sure Mr. Stevens was there. I know the Baton Washington project was talked about a little bit, some idea at the Stratford Motor Lodge. I left my notes at home.
Yeah, so senior purpose project with ground-level retail and a mix of car levels.
Yeah, it seemed early stages.
Eight stories.
Yeah. And again, Baton Washington project had some, maybe some, you know, challenges to work out. I mean, we still haven't seen anything official about that, and it sounded like maybe they were going to figure some stuff out and bring it forward soon, but I don't know. Any other quick work with it?
I went to the EDA meeting last night. It was amazing. That's my full report.
Thank you. Anything else? No?
Yeah, I went to CACT, but you got what they worked on, which was the comments for this project. So there we are.
All right, great. All right, moving on. I don't know if we're supposed to tackle this or not, but I read the correspondence on the hangman's tree plaque. It's an interesting issue. Since it is almost 10:30, I'm inclined to take this up later, but if people really want to talk about it now, we can. Or, I mean, no, I mean, we're not, no, there's no official position that we need to take, right?
No, this is Gary Forre, acting planning director for this evening. It was an action that was, the plaque was developed by the historic commission previously. The tree's been removed, the hangman's tree. The plaque's still there. As the originator of it, they're looking to remove the plaque. There's not a specific action for the planning commission required by code. You know, you do have a recommendation to council on monuments and statuary and stuff like that. This seems to be under that threshold, but, you know, it's an informational item, and you're welcome to provide any comments you would want to provide. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Gary. Does anyone want to make a comment? I had a couple of quick thoughts about it, but someone else wants to say something.
I think we should stay out of it. I think it's, let's let the groups who are more versed in the history of the city comment on that. And we all, I'm sure we all have our own personal opinions about it, but to me, it seems like we're wading into waters that are, you know, difficult to navigate. I'll leave it at that.
So I guess the question I have is like, is this going to be forwarded to the historical commission to look at? Because it seems like they would be the right people to look into this. I mean, I'm fine with removing it, and I think we should, unless it has some true historic value. But, I mean, anyway.
Yeah, I was, this person has been in fact the historical. I, I have personal thoughts, like Mr. Krasner said, but I think it doesn't seem like it's necessarily this particular aspect is within our purview. It was interesting to read about it. All right, I'm going to let that one go. Mr. Fuller, do you have anything important to talk about from the director's report?
No, I'll just, you know, you've got copies of the materials on the Google Maps, integration with Bike Share. Then there was National Capital Trail Network Establishment and Plan. Then there was correspondence in regard to biophilic cities network. And then you were, the site plan for the Columbia Baptist Amendment was approved administratively. And then the Building Safety Division quarterly report showed a surge in work related to inspections. And there's a number of projects that are actively driving that. So those were the highlights, the materials there. If you want more information. The last item that I would just touch on, as I always do, is for your upcoming meetings, you have a number of items that are going to be coming up. So you have on August 19th, the West End Small Area Plan Recommendation to Council. And then potential work sessions on CIP snapshot update. And then community notice, we had, originally had that scheduled for this meeting, but we're doing a little more work on it, so it'll be available for the 19th. Following that, on September 2nd, you have the West End Small Area Plan, actually, public hearing and recognition on that versus the work session in your next meeting. And then planning commission work plan update. We'll also have materials for that available for September 2nd, for you to look at again. Then looking forward, September 16th, we have speaker series on housing and needs and challenges. And then the George Mason High School Phase Two Site Plan and Phase One Landscape Amendment. Those look like they'll be scheduled for that meeting for final action by the commission and then so forth. So those are the highlights of what we have coming on the agendas. So we'll have some steady work here. Thank you.
All right, thanks a lot. I will just make one comment. I'm sure we have very little control over this, but I'll just throw this out there. I would love to find a technical solution that would allow the public to make public comment during our public meetings, sort of like old times. So, I know, I'm sure people are trying to figure that out, but I'll just, I'll just say that I would like to figure that out at some point, if this pandemic is going to go on forever. All right, anything else before we wrap this up? It's after 10:30. I think that's technically our cutoff, unless we want to drag it on. No? All right, well, thank you, everyone.